Welcome everyone. It's a beautiful evening in Northboro, Massachusetts, and this is the Board of Selectmen meeting of September 12th, 2022. This meeting of the Northboro Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with the July 16, 2022 Act relative to extending a certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Northboro Board of Selectmen are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. This order allows the Northboro Board of Selectmen to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of the meeting may do so by going to Northboro Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link posted on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting, as all of our meetings, will feature public comment. I will now confirm that everyone can hear me and be heard. Julianne Hirsch.
Here.
Scott Rogers.
President.
Jason Bro.
Present.
Kristen Wixted is not expected to join us this evening. She is traveling. And we also have with us John Kader.
Present.
Fire Chief Dave Parenti.
Present.
Police Chief Bill Liver.
Present.
DTPW Director Scott Sharpen here.
Present.
And I see a spot for Northboro Cable. Northboro Cable is here. Thank you very much for joining us. And let's get started unless anybody has anything else to do. First, our item on our agenda is, as always, public comment. If there are any members of the audience that would like to comment upon anything, ideally something that is not on our agenda, because we'll allow public comment during any agenda item, raise your hand in Zoom and I will recognize you. Going once. Going twice. Gone. And next up on our agenda, the approval of meeting minutes from August 15th, 2022. Do I have a motion or any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of August 15th, 2022.
Check.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Jason. Any discussion or comment? Okay, all those in favor, Jason?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Julianne?
Hi.
I also vote I. Vote is unanimous in favor. Approved. Thank you. Next up is we have a continued public hearing to consider an application from GNI 9 Forbes Whitney LLC to amend the existing above-ground storage license for premises located at 30 Forbes Road by increasing the onsite storage of flammable and combustible liquids, flammable gases, and flammable solids. John, I understand that we're continuing that hearing and that we're going to continue to date to certain later?
Yes, the applicant is going through the special permit modification process. They're scheduled to go before the planning board on September 20th. And reasonable timeframe to continue the hearing would be to your November 7th meeting.
Excellent. Would someone like to make a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to continue the public hearing for the application of GNI 9 Forbes Whitney LLC to amend the existing above-ground storage license for premises located at 30 Forbes Road to the November 7, 2022 meeting of the board at 7:00 PM.
Okay, motion made by Jason. I'll give the second to Scott. Any discussion or comment? Okay, all those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
Julianne?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
I also vote I. Is unanimous in favor. We're continuing that. Next up, just barely 7:05, continuing the public hearing for poll petition 30579396 from Mass Electric, DBA National Grid, and Verizon New England for a new pole location on Pine Haven Drive. Let's see, so we continued that from last month for some discussion between the town and the applicant and the adjacent property owner. Scott, I assume you have some information for us?
I do, Mr. Chairman. You can let in the National Grid representative. I believe he's listed as an attendee by Jeff Endgrid.
That would be my, sorry, the only one I can find that was close.
Okay.
Okay, I I, Fire Chief Parenti, if you could make me a moderator or whatever the magic word is, so I can let folks in, it'd be great.
In the meantime, Mr. Chair, our town engineer Fred Litchfield met with the National Grid designer Jeff at the property, spoke with the homeowner. The pole location, the new pole location can't be changed as was previously discussed, but the guy wire anchor has been changed to be shifted further up the hill beyond the limits of the pavement for the parking spot. And the resident was pleased with the revised layout, as was National Grid, and there's a memorandum in your packet identifying that the town has no concerns with this petition.
Okay, the resident, Ms. Mendelson, is asked to be let in. Jeff, do you have any, any comments or questions before I bring in the resident as, as the applicant?
No, everything is, everything is copacetic. I actually shifted the pole down with Mr. Litchfield another foot and a half. So where the anchor wire is going to go to the property, it's going to barely clear the tree and it, it'll be at the front end of the vehicle if, for any vehicle that'll park there. It should and will not be an intrusion in any way.
Great. All right, Michelle Mendelson, I'm going to let you in now. I brought you to a panelist because you're the mutter to this. Hi, Michelle. How are you? You are muted currently. If you want to unmute yourself.
Okay. So, um, just a correction, I, I did have a phone conversation with Fred after they came out and looked at the property again after our last meeting. I did not agree to anything. I also want to let you know that it appears that the poll petition was revised on September 6th. I didn't receive a copy of that. Luckily, one of my friends forwarded it to me. I also did not receive any notification of this meeting nor the new Zoom meeting ID or password. Luckily, again, a friend had forwarded it to me in spite of the fact that this has to do with my property. Um, yes, they have moved the marker for where they are going to put the tether. However, I have received no schematic of how that will look in my parking spot in spite of asking for that. And there's just a lot of hands waving. You even heard Jeff use the word should not interfere with my space. And so I would, I know that my time is limited here to three minutes.
I'm not going to limit you to three minutes. You're, you're the, you're the key of butter here. You're, you're part of this discussion.
Thank you. I, I do oppose this poll movement at this time, please, because I just feel I don't have any, I don't have any reassurances or further recourse for ensuring that it does not interfere with my space. I think I mentioned earlier that I will be selling this property sometime in the future, and I don't want that to be a factor in having trouble, you know, having that space as a part of that property.
So if, if we cannot put the anchor and move the pole, the process for the poles to be replaced in that area will be delayed substantially, which would cause more outages in the future. I've done my due diligence to try to take care of her concerns. And this is kind of a shock to me from where we were prior to this. And I don't understand the, the reasoning for it, but it will, it will delay the the poles to be changed out in that neighborhood, which will cause probably further outages and everything else in the future. We're trying to help the customers in that area and it's there's no other remedy to fix that situation without cutting a substantial amount of trees to make it work.
It, it sounds to me that there was a lot of work done, certainly on National Grid's part and the town's part, but that the property owner wasn't brought in on that discussion, which surprises me, given the discussion we had last meeting. I do want to apologize to Michelle that I guess we did not notify you about this. I think, you know, we probably should have, and that's on us. So I apologize for that. Scott Sharpen here, you had your hand up a minute ago. If you had something to add?
Yes, through the chair. Jeff, is the proposed guy anchor located within the public way or is it within an easement on the abutting property?
It will be via an easement on the private property. It cannot go in the public way because her driveway is right there, which is in the public way, which you said was kind of an illegal driveway to begin with. If, if you're looking at it that way, so the only recourse is to push the guy wire back into the property to support the pole line that goes down J Street. So if that driveway wasn't there, we could put the anchor straight down, which would still be in the public way and not need any of this. But because there is a driveway there, which is technically in the public, public way, we're doing our our due diligence to try to take care of her and also take care of National Grid's interest at the same time.
So the easement that you're looking to get, is that on Ms. Mendelson's property?
The, the easement for the anchor will be will be on her property. Correct.
So obviously you need her cooperation.
I do, but, and again, the, the, the whole point of needing her cooperation is because she has a parking spot in the right of way on the side, which would be town property where we would be able to anchor the pole back and not need an easement. So we're trying to help her out and we're looking for the same kind of help. I mean, it, it's a two-way street, you know what I mean? You help me, I help you. But if, 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 if it's only a one-way street, there's nothing really that would.
It's, it sounds to me, and somebody feel free to correct me if I've understood incorrectly, that there were, there were further discussions, an agreement to move the anchor and move, move the, the pole or the height of the pole or something like that, which all sounds great, but that the loop wasn't closed to update Ms. Mendelson as to those changes. So to get her, and that's what we were looking for.
The only thing that has changed was I pushed the pole even further closer to the tree to help her out with her parking situation. So I did my due diligence in doing that, and the guy wire that is in the tree right now, which could potentially come down at any moment. We don't know what, what storms are going to come and how bad they're going to be, will be removed from that tree and placed into the ground at the furthest point passing the tree and avoiding any vehicle that she will have in that spot, which again, as I was told by Mr. Litchfield, that is technically an illegal parking spot in the right of way anyways.
All right, let's, let's not get into illegal parking spots and so forth here. We're, we're just talking about a poll petition. The changes that you made sound consistent with what we talked about last time. I want to hear from, from Michelle as to, if I'm understanding correctly, that, that you just didn't get the update as to the changes that were, are proposed or anything else you wanted to add.
Yeah, so since our last meeting, I've not spoken with Jeff. I did get a call from Fred Litchfield saying that they had visited the property. They did not meet with me at that time, but they did visit the property and they did move their.
Michelle, could you move the microphone from your earbuds a little closer to your mouth or, or whatever the microphone is?
Sorry.
Oh, thank you. That's much better.
Yes. So, um, so Fred did mention that that they had moved where the, the anchor would be. And I asked Fred at that time, you know, I said that, you know, it wasn't just me, but that the Board of Selectmen was also concerned about people after me and parking any kind of vehicle. And I asked for a rough schematic of what the angle to that would look like. Because yes, it is close to the, there is a tree that is very close to where they want to put the anchor. It is as close as they can get to that tree. It is maybe half a foot into the paved portion of, of my parking space. And I just, you know, I haven't done the math to be able to figure out the angle and whether or not that angle is going to come across so that if somebody, say, my teenage son in a few years, ends up putting the car in reverse instead of forward or vice versa, hits the, the tether and takes down the telephone pole. I mean, I don't, I don't want it cutting so that, you know, so that it's right there in the parking space and something that can be hit. And so I asked Fred for that schematic and he said that that was, that was not something he was going to be able to do, which I find kind of amazing from the engineer, you know, speaking with two engineers here. Having a mechanical engineering degree myself, I found that kind of amazing that I could not get a schematic to kind of show how this angle is going to be from the top of the pole to where they're proposing to make sure that there looks like there's clearance. I know that last time that we spoke, we talked about making sure that the engineers had the amount of clearance that was required for a parking space, so on and so forth. I haven't seen anything like that.
I was never given the information to get you that schematic or else I would have did that, done that a long time ago, to be honest with you. That message was never relieved to me.
I appreciate, appreciate that, Jeff. Members of the board or town staff have any questions or anything to add before we continue? Julianne?
Jeff, you mentioned that if, if this solution that you're proposing tonight doesn't go through, that there would be more work to do on the street. Could you go into more detail about that? And you said there would be a time delay. What?
We are, we are replacing all of the poles and all of the lines in that area to upgrade the system to make it more reliable for the residents of that area. So we're making it more robust and in order to do that, this pole is in a bad spot as it is, and we're trying to get it more aligned with the poles that go down J Street. And in order to do that, because you have massive pines in the area, we're trying to keep the pines where they are and not damage them and also not need to prevent the work that needs to be done.
Are the trees you're talking about on Michelle's property?
There's some on Michelle's property. There's some on the property across the street. The, the, the issue is, is when we're replacing this pole by Michelle's house, it has an anchor in the tree.
Right.
Which is called the tree guy. We have, we no longer do those tree guys. The only way to fix it is to put it into the ground. To put it into the ground is where her driveway is. So my, my fix was to slide the pole over nine to 11 feet and then put the guy on her property. That way, everything becomes copacetic. Tough question.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board or town staff? Jason?
Yeah, a couple of things, I guess. From a trigonometry standpoint, it shouldn't be too difficult to kind of determine what the elevation of the wire would be relative to the dimensions of the, the existing parking spot.
So I have all that.
To have at least that information, the lowest point, I guess, that it would intrude. And then in addition to that, I would think that there is an existing parking spot, but there isn't an obligation to accommodate any vehicle that, that might be there. And there could be any number of obstacles that the car traversing through there could potentially have hit. It could be a fence pole. It could be a mailbox. It, it could be anything. So I, I think that here, there are perhaps only a couple of reasonable options. One of them is to put the guy where the parking spot is located. And the second is to obtain an easement and put the guy on the property of the, the property owner. And whichever of those solutions best accommodates the property owner is perhaps the thing to do. But we do have the consideration of the larger picture here where we're trying to improve the service and reliability throughout the neighborhood. And I think we need to be expeditious in, in trying to accomplish that goal as well, as well as remediating the known safety issue or the, the known concern with the guy currently attached to the tree.
Jeff, question. I'm sorry, Scott, go ahead.
Yeah, actually a question for Jeff and he, he might have the information available. I mean, if we were to show a street view picture of the property that shows the space, the pole, the two trees that are kind of in play, is there enough information that we can look at the picture, describe what's going on and be able to make a determination tonight?
Yes, I can, I can help you out with all that.
And so I would, I would say I have the picture up if some, if you'd like me to share.
I'd rather have Jeff do it as the applicant, if you have that handy?
I don't have, I, I can't, I, I don't have that ability right now. I'm on my.
All right. All right, Scott Rogers, I'm happy with you doing it. And then Jeff can, can describe what we see.
Excellent. Is that coming through now?
Yes.
We see it.
So Jeff, if you could, the, the existing pole location, can you kind of infer where the new pole location would be, maybe in relation to the shrub or the tree?
The new location will be in the shrub approximately 10 feet from that existing pole to the left.
Great. And then the distance from the pole to the edge of the parking space now, what is that? Does anybody know?
Now is about a foot and a half.
I'm sorry, sorry, from, from the pole to the head of the parking space?
I believe that is probably six feet. Give or take.
Right. So if we're six feet to the end of the parking space, another four feet for the new pole location, the pole is beyond the parking.
So can you, can you, can you slide up further? Hit the arrow?
Yeah, let's.
A little bit past, a little bit past the mailbox.
It jumps. Oh, that might be.
Yeah. So the, the pole is going to be right in the middle of those two shrubs. Maybe, give or take. Yep. Correct. And the, and the guy wire is going to sneak right past that existing tree. Approximately, approximately 15 feet back from where the pole is.
And, and would that be then on the left side of this tree or the right side?
On the right side of the tree. And the reason why it has to be there is because we're trying to keep it straight to J Street and also you have a massive tree that will need to be cut because of the primary wires going down J Street.
Yeah, I, we see that kind of back. There's, you can do a street view there that's, that shows some of the trees coming back the other way.
I, I never said my job was easy.
If, if you don't mind me, I show, that, that photo is at least from nine years ago because that's my old car. Can I show you a photo from a better angle that was taken within the last month?
I'm sure. Go ahead.
Okay, let me see if I can show my screen here.
Sure.
I apologize. Hopefully this will work. Okay. So this shows better the angle, you know, looking into the parking space. The tether is going to come in front of this tree right here to the right. And it is paved a bit beyond that. And, and into these bushes over here. So just wanted to show you that it's actually coming, you know, in towards the, the paved area. If you kind of look at the pole, I assume will be in line with this pole as in as far away from the street as this pole. Again, my concerns are the angles. How is the angle going to come in? Is it going to come in, you know, close to, you know, is it going to come in low? Is it going to come in very high?
I, I think if I could, that, that tree that you're pointing at right there is a great marker because Jeff, do you have a sense? And I know I'm putting you on the spot here, about how high up that tree will the guy wire cross?
So we're putting a, we're putting a 40-foot pole.
Yep.
And the tether is going to go back 15 feet from the pole.
Okay.
So that angle on that, that tether will be far higher past the bushes than what the perception is. And the property also goes up on an angle. As you're looking at it to the right, it goes uphill. So you're already going to gain more angle to the pole as it is.
Great. So you're probably, just very, very rough math, you're probably looking at about 25, 28 feet up that tree for where the.
Cross. Yep, you're probably on the low end, maybe 14, 15 feet.
Okay, that's still, that's.
Much, and again, right. And then again, and again, if, if her son or anybody makes a mistake, they're going to hit that tree before they hit the guy wire.
Understood.
That, that 14, 15 feet estimate has never been communicated to me, just letting you know.
And, and again, I, I was not given the information to give you that because I, I would have been, I would have gladly given that, that information.
Okay. All right. I don't think there's anything else we need to look at in that picture. I, I think we've got a couple of options. One option is we could, in theory, continue this yet again. I think that National Grid has done their due diligence of trying to redesign this to what I suspect is, is the maximum allowance for where the pole and the wire and everything else can go. And I appreciate that, Jeff. It sounds like some of these details hadn't been communicated prior to this meeting, and I wish they had been, but this is where we are. One option is we could continue this yet again, which personally I'd rather not do. I'd rather see this draw to a conclusion. At the same time, I appreciate that Michelle hasn't seen this, seen these details in writing and probably wants to. My understanding and either Scott Sharpen here or John or Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is if potentially if we approve this tonight, National Grid can't actually do this work until they also get the easement from Michelle. Is that accurate?
That is, that is accurate.
Okay, so what we could do is approve it and then let National Grid and Michelle work out the easement details. And hopefully, everything will go satisfactorily and, and we won't see this again. And it sounds like if we need to see this again, it's because there would be something different, such as a dramatic location, relocation of poles or something like that, that would probably necessitate another petition.
Is, is there a way that we can have stipulations to where? I mean, I, I don't, I don't know Michelle and she seems nice and I've talked to her many times, but if, if something in her mind says she doesn't want to go through with it, then we're back to square one again. You know what I mean? Is, is there something that we can do or say that can make sure that progress is going to continue forward?
I don't know if, I mean, we, we, the town can't require Michelle to, to really do anything. I don't want to see this again. I'm hoping that all the parties can get this sorted out. It sounds visually from me, from that last picture that Michelle put up, taught me more about this situation than anything else I had seen thus far. So I, my gut feeling is I hope this can work. We, we can't bind them to anything. So the, the other, the other option, I'll leave it up to you, Jeff, as the applicant. The other option is we continue it another month and then come back here yet again and sort it out. And hopefully that you've ironed out every last little detail.
I like, I like all of you, but I really don't want to come back.
Understood. Same here. Thoughts? Julianne, you've got your hand up.
My, my preference would be to continue the hearing. I'm sorry. I, I just feel like if we, if we approve this. if we, if we approve this, then Michelle is out on her own trying to negotiate with National Grid and you know, I, I, there, there's a lot of pressure now because, you know, we've approved it. I, I'd like to see, I'd like to see her given the schematics that she asked for and to get some I mean, we're, we're talking approximations here with 14 feet, 40 feet, so that she gets as definite numbers as possible and, and then we, you know, we hear it again and it will probably go quickly if, if everything is suitable.
Michelle, do you have a preference as to how to approach this?
First of all, I want to say thank you, Julianne, for, for always thinking of me and I agree with her. You know, getting the schematics, getting things in writing, getting things, being able to see and have the numbers is, is gonna help move this forward.
Other members of the board, any, any thoughts either way? Jason?
I agree. I think it's best to continue to get all the numbers and agreements in writing so that everyone has a clear understanding of what the expectations and the reality will be. And, and then I would hope or anticipate that that the you know, the resolution will be as satisfactory as it can be, given the constraints on the location.
Okay. Scott Rogers?
Yeah, then, then finally, just a, a more general comment. You know, this brings up a situation where a property owner may have inherited a situation where a structure has been built in a public way. And, and I think, you know, this just kind of highlights that, you know, when you do take over a property, you know, be aware where your property lines are. Any structures that might be in the public way, you know, there might be a rock wall, might be driveway, might be driveway extensions. And just make sure you're clear on, you know, where your property lines are, what utilities, you know, might be, might be nearby. And then be prepared for, in some cases, that structure may need to be removed.
Okay, so it's, it sounds like continuing is the way we're gonna go, which is fine with me. Jeff, sorry, you have to deal with us at least one more time. We have a meeting in two weeks on the 26th and we have another meeting, I think, two weeks after that on October 10. We have an, is is that accurate, John? October 10th I have as Columbus Day celebrated. Off the top of my head, I don't remember what we did with that date.
I believe it's October 3rd.
Yeah, okay. So 26th and the 3rd are our next two meetings. Someone want to make a, a suggestion, either the applicant or the, or the abutter? Jason?
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue this hearing to September 26 at 7:00 PM.
There a second?
I just amend, since we continued to seven, maybe state this one as 7:05.
Yes.
As we continued Forbes to seven.
Forbes is until November 7th though.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Okay. Okay, and Julianne, I, I got a second first from Julianne before you had your comments, I'm gonna give that to Julianne since it ended up not being amended in the first place. That gives all parties some time to get to know each other a little bit better and I, I suggest the two of you maybe get on the phone or start talking by email and hopefully involve as little of the town's time as possible other than to confirm that everything is good. And I would ask that if you whether or not you've reached an agreement, give us a few days' notice prior to the meeting and, and let us know so we know what to do. But I, I suggest the two of you get on the phone very quickly to, to sort this out. I think you're, I think you're very close. My gut feeling. And I hope so. Hope I'm right.
I, I'll draft something up on the angle and whereabouts the guy wire will be. And I will swing by Michelle's house, if not this week, next week to discuss face to face. I'm a face to face guy. I don't like, I don't like the phone stuff, so.
Appreciate that, Jeff. I think that's, that's a good idea. Michelle, that's good with you. All right, we have a mo- motion and a second. All those in favor, let's see, Jason?
Hi.
Julianne?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
I also vote I. Vote is unanimous in favor. We'll see you again soon.
Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next up, definitely being after 7:10 PM, we have a petition for open the public hearing to consider a petition submitted by New Singular Wireless PCS LLC DBA AT&amp;T for a grant of location for one small wireless facility on a replacement utility pole near 267 to 269 Main Street. I assume we have some folks to to let in for this.
Yeah. Dolan MR is representative, the attorney. Okay. That's Michael Dolan.
Okay, Michael, I'm bringing you over to panelist. I've got a couple of other people with hands up. I, do we know if they are? We'll ask Michael when he comes in if they're related to the app, part of the applicant. Michael, if you want to turn on your video, there you go. How are you?
Hey, how are you? Good evening, everyone.
Good, good. Is there anyone else that I should bring in as part of the application process for you?
Yeah, Kelly Fay should be on the list.
I see her.
And, and a Don Hayes, H A E S.
I Donald, yeah, yeah. Okay, bringing in Donald. Very good and good evening. Still waiting for Kelly to turn on video and audio.
Yep, can you hear me?
I can hear you fine. If the three of you could just identify yourselves and your, your role in the application process, we'll get going.
Sure, sorry, go ahead, Mike.
Michael Dolan from the law firm at Brown Rudnick.
Kelly Fay, I work for Nexius on behalf of AT&amp;T.
Donald Hayes, independent consultant and a radiation safety specialist.
Thank you very much for joining us. So you have submitted a petition for I think what's called a small wireless facility. I'm sure you know that this may generate some discussion being located adjacent to a school. We'll, we'll get there. But go ahead and, and give us a little bit of information.
Yeah, so, good evening, everyone. You may remember me from two other applications we had before the select board six or seven months ago. This is the third of the three that we had were proposing for North Borough. By way of background, my client AT&amp;T has a license to operate wireless telecommunications network throughout the country, including here in the Commonwealth. What we are proposing here today, as we did in the other situations, is a small cell antenna installation on a replacement utility pole in order to deal with rapidly increasing demand on AT&amp;T's network. The small cell will be mounted to, as I referenced, a replacement utility pole in the public right of way. AT&amp;T's RF engineers targeted this proposed location due to high data demands on its network. There was a small search area in which they realized that they need a small cell antenna facility to help bridge an area where they're having coverage needs. And this was the pole, the only pole that apparently AT&amp;T could attach to. And here we are with this application. AT&amp;T's existing macro antenna sites, which are the large eight-foot panel antennas you've definitely seen on towers and water tanks and the like are not providing adequate data capacity and coverage in this area due to heavy use. So this small cell facility would help ameliorate that situation. The facility would consist of a small unobtrusive antenna on the top of the pole and a small equipment cabinet on the side of the pole, along with an electric meter box. There'd be some cabling connecting the various components, but it is a very visually minimally intrusive installation. When one thinks of a transformer and other pertinences already on many telephone poles, this is very similar to that. And in short, you know, we are hoping that we can secure an approval for this facility so that AT&amp;T can handle more data at faster speeds and with better and more reliable coverage. I didn't have any comments prepared specifically for Mr. Hayes or Ms. Fay, but I wanted them here in case there were questions that the board had that might be germane to their area of expertise. So with that, I, I would love to answer any questions you may have regarding our proposal.
Members of the board, questions, comments before I open it up to the public? Julianne?
So, I think we can't, got, got into this issue the last time when, when you were putting something on by White Cliffs. The Nexius report is a report on a pole at 292 Main Street. The proposal is for 265 to 267. And that, that makes me a little uncomfortable that the, the structural analysis is done on, on the wrong pole.
Yeah, so I, I'll let Kelly speak to that. She works at Nexius, but my understanding is the structural referenced an address that is different, there, there's multiple addresses that seem to be there's different ways to identify a pole. As you know, a pole doesn't have its own address. So there's, there can be a couple of different addresses associated with the general location of a pole, but that, that structural analysis did in fact relate to this specific pole, which is pole number 25-1. Kelly, do you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, sure, of course. You know, unfortunately, mistakes happen and our engineers are not perfect people. So typically how it works is all the information is submitted to them from the CDs that are given to them, the construction drawings. And then they take, you know, obviously their report and they update the information they need to, like the site name, the PACE number, the site address, things like that. Sometimes things are, are overlooked, which is very unfortunate and you know, unfortunately, this is one of those instances where the address on the structural analysis was overlooked, although all the rest of the information is accurate to this specific pole.
So Kelly, to summarize what you just said, other than the misidentification of an address, the pole analyzed 25-1 is in fact the pole on which we are proposing our equipment and which is the pole that was analyzed by Nexius in structural assessment?
Correct. We use latitude and longitude, you know, and that's essentially what they went by. That's how we identify our poles. The address utility poles don't have addresses. You know, typically we choose an address that is close so that abutters can be notified. But we go by latitude and longitude and the latitude and longitude that they used for this specific structural matches that specific pole.
Is there something that you can identify on the Nexus report that directly corresponds with? Whether it be the latitude and longitude or I'm looking at it now, trying to find a 25-1 on there.
So if you look at page five of the structural, it says like OCal, Ocal Pro Analysis Report on the top. And it has, you know, pole numbers, customer site name.
All right, I don't see page numbers on the copy that I have.
I don't think there actually is a page number. I'm just, I'm looking at it digitally. And it says it's page five. So it's the actual first page of their report. So not any of the, it's like, you know, it shows calculations and things like that. On the, the first box up top, on the bottom of that box, it says latitude and longitude. And it's identified there.
Mitch, if it helps, it's page 36 of the package.
Oh, sorry, I.
Yeah, we have a package that includes all of our information, so it doesn't correspond with your page numbers and I'm looking for. Sorry, I'm, I'm tilting my head to the left because it is not rotated.
Does it say the pole number or just the longitude and latitude?
Just the longitude and latitude, I believe.
Okay, so I see that, so, and does that correspond with something on the application?
That should correspond with the actual construction drawings that were given.
And the correct addresses on that page.
The correct addresses on that page, Scott? 265 to 267?
Yes. Well, it's like 269 to 267.
In the name. In the project information box on page one of the drawings, it has the latitude and longitude as well as the site address.
Okay. All right, I see that one here. 30, 40 and 890. 30, 40 and 890, yes, they match, okay. So I, I will, at least from my perspective, give you that they are the same but different. Okay?
And we can certainly get that amended and, you know, resubmitted if that is an issue. Like I said, unfortunately, you know, they sometimes make mistakes.
Yeah, from, from my perspective, having the, it, it would have been certainly cleaner to have consistent information across all of all the supplied materials, but showing the same latitude and longitude is, for me, satisfactory. Can't speak to anybody else. Questions, comments from the board? Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a couple of questions. One is in our packet as part of this submission, we have two maps of the area which might be described as heat maps showing areas of like strong versus weak signal coverage. And this, the intent of this is to show the improvement made by this installation. As I look at this, I do see, you know, what's represented to be quite an improvement in the vicinity of this pole, but there are still certain areas around it that they continue to be comparatively weak. And I guess I'm wondering, is there a plan for any further antenna installations to improve the coverage? Kind of expanding from beyond this particular location.
That, that's a good question. I handle the permitting for AT&amp;T in this area, the Commonwealth. My law firm and I do throughout the Commonwealth. And in North Borough right now, this is the last small cell antenna in the pipeline that I am aware of. That's not to say in the future they won't you know, be looking to install more small cell facilities, but right now it's on a strictly priority basis. So yes, I agree, there's many areas in many cities and towns that could be in need of some improved coverage. But, you know, with limited resources at any given time, AT&amp;T has to prioritize and do things in a certain order. And this was seen as one of those three top most important spots in North Borough for a small cell facility. The other two having already been attended to, and this would be that final third one that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the board? I will say that you choosing to locate this directly in front of a school certainly presents some challenges, and I expect as we open this up to the public, we will hear from some people who have some thoughts about that. And I will say that the board received a number of emails from some concerned parents and other people, particularly associated with the school, with some concerns about that. Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things. One is perhaps it would be worthwhile to at least summarize the Telecommunications Act of 1996 and some of the legal and regulatory constraints that apply to this application in our decision process. Secondarily, I guess I, maybe that, you know, we can begin with that, but I would have at least one other question for Mr. Hayes, the emissions expert, after we cover that.
Why don't we do that? So first off, the 1996 Telecommunications Act was legislation by Congress adopted to facilitate the build-out of our national wireless communication systems. It tried to, well, it did take control of certain aspects of the regulation of these systems so as to help allow for a consistent application of oversight over certain aspects of the development. One of those things is regulating health and safety concerns regarding RF emissions and public health concerns. So the FCC, because of the 1996 Telecommunications Act, they were deemed to be, have sole jurisdiction over that issue such that when there's an application before a local municipality for a wireless telecommunications facility, that issue has been afforded stolen exclusive review by the federal government through the FCC as opposed to the local municipality. Nonetheless, AT&amp;T has always wanted to be a good corporate citizen, and we try to explain why we believe the facility is in fact very safe. It complies with every state, local, and federal regulation relative to radio frequency emissions. In fact, the emissions here are but a small fraction of the allowable limit of RF emissions that this facility can generate. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Hayes. You have seen in our application that we did submit a report relative to the emissions from this facility and demonstrating and going through a thorough analysis as to why this facility does comply with the FCC guidelines regarding emissions. As, you know, from a macro level, I will remind the board that there are thousands and thousands of antenna facilities, and those even being the macro antenna facilities, which the antennas are four and five times the size of what we're proposing here. And those facilities are located across the country in thousands of schools, churches, church steeples, arenas, hospitals. They're everywhere where people of all ages either congregate or live. And this is not anything unique that we're proposing here. So with that done, maybe you could take it from here to kind of explain a little bit about what these antennas do as far as emitting RF emissions, and then talk about how that works within the framework of the federal guidelines.
Before we jump over to that, I'd appreciate if, John, you had any, anything additional to offer. I mean, I appreciate, Mr. Dolan, that you're an expert in this and so forth, but John is our legal expert as far as this meeting goes. So I'd love to hear from you as to anything additional to add on the regulations that bound what we can and cannot do this evening.
Sure, just briefly, I did provide to the board a memo from council. It basically said similar to what Mr. Dolan just recounted. In the board's jurisdiction, you are not allowed to take into consideration potential health impacts or safety concerns. Again, that's been taken out of your control and it is within the purview of the FCC. So that isn't something that the board, as I'm sure you may hear comments as often is the case with regard to a wireless facility. That is not something that is in the board's purview. And I do, I did provide you with that information from council. It pretty much mirrors what Mr. Dolan just conveyed to the board. So not trusting the applicant's attorney, I wanted to make sure you had the information directly from town.
I appreciate that, John, thank you. And you can continue, I think, Mr. Hayes, who are going to speak. Although it sounds like you could tell us that there was 100 pounds of radioactive plutonium in there, and because the health and safety is outside of our jurisdiction, we have little to say about it, but please go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Don Hayes, H-A-E-S, independent consultant. Thank you, John, for what you said. I would just suggest that you preface that with, to the extent that the site complies with the FCC regulations, the following is true. So to respond to the chair, if it was full of plutonium or whatever radioactive materials, that would be under different regulations within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So
Comment with the frustrating comedic gesture was intended.
I understand, and I'm trying not to be flippant about it. I understand this is a very serious topic. I've actually been working in this particular field for over 40 years. And so this particular aspect in the radio frequency end, about 35 years. So what I had mentioned earlier, to the extent that the site conforms and complies with the FCC regulations, that was the question that AT&amp;T through Nexius had asked to me is that, can you demonstrate that the site, if built, remember, this is not here right now that we can go out and make measurements with? If the site were to be built, would it comply with FCC regulations? And my response back is in this report, and it introduces not only the FCC regulations, but also the Commonwealth of Massachusetts regulations in 105 CMR 120. So what I did for my theoretical predictions is I followed the FCC guidelines on just how to do these with a couple of additions, if you will. I like to assume that the ground is a perfect reflector for the wave, and therefore my answers are typically four times higher than if you did not account for any ground reflections. And when I go out and make my measurements, I find that it's nowhere near a factor of four. But I do it anyway just because it's conceivable that it could happen, even though I've never really seen it in nature. Then I also assume that the transmitters are installed as they are designed. The antenna is as designed, and the site is at 100% capacity. And then I do a couple of further conservative actions. One, I don't assume any degradation of the signal due to building materials, atmospheric conditions, foliage, environmental conditions, things like that. And when I run the calculations, I don't know if you have a copy of my report, but it's on page six of my report. I don't know what page that is on the submission.
You've conveniently numbered your pages, so I see that it says results at the top.
Yes, sir, page six of 13.
Page 51 of our packet, if anyone
Thank you. So what we have here are the theoretical predictions. And again, this is assuming 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 100% transmission. And I performed calculations at six feet above the ground in accordance with FCC rationale. And as you can see, that even at the highest, that is everything happening at the same time, you would see no more than 9.3% of the allowable limit. That's 10 times below the limit, or actually almost 11 times. And in deference to the Massachusetts laws, I provide calculations at 16 feet above the ground as well. And you can see that even at 16 feet above the ground, it would be less than 12% of the allowable limit, or about eight times below. So in conclusion, what I found was if this site were to be built as designed, it would be well within the allowable limits for radio frequency exposure that have been published by both the FCC and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Public Health. The appendices are just all of the equipment and antenna information that I use to prepare my calculations. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Hayes, I'd just like to clarify, in your diagram there where you're quoting the 11 or 12% and 9% figures, those numbers, those are percentages relative to allowable maximum?
That's correct. The allowable maximum would be 100%. So for example, if you're driving down the road at the speed limit, which is 55 miles per hour, if you're driving at one half of that, you're driving at 50% of the speed limit.
Okay. And then the second question, those particular percentages are at the location of the transmitter or the base of the pole of the transmitter? And then that diminishes with distance?
That's correct. If you look at the lower axis or the x-axis, that represents distance from the base of the pole. And so as you can see, once we get out beyond about 100 feet, it really starts to go down quite a bit. Now, fortunately, the, this is not an AT&amp;T phone, sorry, Mr. Dolan. These phones operate at a much lower signal than many of the other things that we use electrical signals for. So it's not a very, very strong signal that we operate with.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
John?
If I may, just, I don't know if this is for Mr. Dolan or Mr. Hayes, but once assuming the installation or A installation is approved, what's done to make sure that the installation actually meets these standards or is less than what was theoretically predicted? In other words, is there testing that's done following the installation to then verify that, yes, this is in fact the impact? And is there a way for the town to see or receive a copy of that, if you were inclined to provide?
Yes, so AT&amp;T has a remote network center that monitors the operation of all of their antenna facilities. And to the extent that anything deviates from their normal operating levels, a signal goes to that center, and then from there someone would come out to take a look at it. And within those operating levels, that's where the levels would be that Mr. Hayes is talking about, actually probably considerably less because he has factored in on so many different metrics, the most conservative components of the calculation. So, you know, it happens by way of remote monitoring. Everything gets back to the home office, and they, these things are being monitored 24/7. And as soon as it isn't, as I say, the ideal intended operation, someone goes out to address it.
I assume that that measuring equipment is within the transmitter itself, that there isn't some other receiver placed six feet above ground level measuring continuously the strength of the signal. So I think, unless you correct me that there is such a thing, I imagine we're talking about two different things.
There is no monitoring devices anywhere outside of the operation of the interior of the facility?
Yeah. Okay, so
So I, I'm sorry, if I may interject, Don Hayes again. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts actually saw ahead of this very issue. And in their portion of the regulations, they specified that if the calculations would indicate that you are greater than 1/3, 33 and 1/3% of the allowable limits, then confirmatory measurements would be required. And so seeing as though this is much less than that, then even the Department of Public Health had determined that you wouldn't necessarily have to make confirmatory measurements.
Sure. This particular discussion is a great lead into some feedback that we received from our planning board. So after the last small wireless facility license, our planning board asked to take a look and came back with some interim recommendations as to how to deal with that. We will go through those before the end of our hearing. But one of them was exactly to this point, just reading from their memo. 90 days after a facility becomes operational, require the applicant to demonstrate that frequency levels are within safety standards. Again, you can respond to that a little bit later, but I appreciate that this came up now because it'll be a good lead into that discussion. I'd love to bring in members of the audience. We've got a couple of hands already raised, and it wouldn't shock me if there were more. I will repeat again, this could have been a little bit easier for us if this pole wasn't right in front of a school, but so be it. You have the right to submit, and we will deal with that. Any questions from the board before I open it up to the public? All right, Amy Paretsky, the first person to have a hand up, I'm going to bring you in. Now?
Can you hear me?
I can hear Amy, welcome.
Okay, thanks for having me. Um, I have a couple of questions. The first one is, goes back to the location of the pole, the pole. Because like Julianne mentioned, Nexius said it was that 292 Main Street. And then it was said that it's, no, it's 267 to 269 Main Street. But if you go to page 27 of your packet, that actually shows it's on the side of the street right in front of Mo's Auto. So I'm just trying to figure out, 267 to 269 is Mo's Auto, and St. Bernadette's is across the street. So the picture on the site plan, page 59, shows a pole on St. Bernadette's parking lot. But then on page 27 in the packet, it shows that it's actually across the street, which I think would be a little better because there is a pole there, and it is a little further from the school, which would probably make people happier. I'm just trying to see which one is it? Because when you guys asked, they said, oh yeah, no, it's 267 to 269. So is it 267 to 269 Mo's Automotive? Or is it across the street on the St. Bernadette's parking lot?
Yeah, it is, it is, it is the pole and the location of the lat and longitude set forth in the plans and in the structural analysis, which correlates to the side where the parish is, that side of the road. And the street address, as we alluded to earlier, there really isn't a street address for a pole, so that is kind of a guesstimate as to how that gets populated. But the definitive answer is that it's on the side where the parish is.
Okay, so the site plan also has the wrong address. So it seems like all those plans need to be updated. Also, I had a question for Michael. Dolan, you mentioned macro locations. Did you look into the pole down the street? There's a macro location behind the police station, and that would cover a lot of Main Street where it looks like you're having issues. So if you put to me A lot of Main Street where it looks like you're having issues. So if you put two antennas up on the macro location. It would take. Take away from having to put it on the poles up and down Main Street. I was just wondering if AT&T ever looked into that?
Yeah, so um, if you, if you look at the uh, um. Coverage maps included with our application at tab four, uh. It shows the existing launched uh, antenna facilities and you can see that there's uh. Four right up and down Main Street and then this proposed small cell facility is right in the middle of two of them. Um, where there's actually a lot of usage. And as I alluded to at the outset, this facility would help uh, remedy that. Uh, drag on the network right there and provide additional safety communications and especially in front of the school. Uh, for folks dropping off, picking up uh, public safety issues. It would just make it that much uh, uh. Uh, more reliable coverage, but that, that site, if I'm not mistaken, that you're referencing, we already have antennas on. Uh, or in the alternative, I know that AT&T would have surely gone to an existing tower. Had that been an option. Kelly, do you want to speak to that at all? Are you aware of that uh, of the pole being mentioned?
Sure, um, so I'm not aware of the pole being mentioned specifically. I'm currently looking at Google Earth, trying to find it. What I do know is um. Existing um, structures like that are not always available for us to put additional equipment on. So there are only certain, there are only so many certain heights. They call them rad centers where you can be. So unfortunately, if, you know. Say this was an option for us. If all those rad centers are taken on that pole, unfortunately, then there's no room for AT&T. Um, I don't know whether AT&T, you know, decided to look that route. Typically, they do that before they even consider small cell. Um, what I do know is that the area that they are severely lacking in coverage is. Where we are trying to put this small cell. So, and there is no viable location within six hundred feet on either side of this pole. So I know you had mentioned there was a pole across the street. Um, unfortunately. Due to utility regulations, we can't use any of the other poles that are on this street. Because they have transformers or some other form of equipment on them.
I drove up and down that street today and the poles across the street at two sixty-five and two sixty-seven. Didn't have anything on them. I just want to make sure AT&T looked because um, I know co-location. Is part of our bylaws. And there is a pole at around two hundred and eleven Main Street, which is a macro site. So that would take care of a lot of these questions. And I don't know if you did look and it sounds like you're not a hundred percent sure either. And when I did drive up and down the street, right across the street. Which brings it around three eighty-four feet away from the school versus. Less than two hundred. Um, there was nothing on those poles and I made sure because I looked at some of them did have transformers, others didn't, but these didn't.
So there are different things that can be uh, problematic from attaching to. Uh, a utility pole standpoint, not just transformers. I'll let Kelly speak to that. But uh, this was the only site. Uh, well, Kelly, could you speak to the types of things that rule out certain utility poles and why? Um, just because there isn't a transformer on it, doesn't mean we can go on it?
Before we do that, um, Amy, I appreciate your comments. I'm going to um, put you back into the attendees to give anyone else a chance to um. Uh, to comment.
Okay, can I make one more comment later? I just had one last.
Absolutely. I will definitely recognize you.
Thanks.
Sure.
So there are multiple reasons why we um, cannot go on some particular utility poles. Transformers is a huge one. Uh, we walk this site or I walk this site myself along with a few other um, individuals and. Again, like I stated, it was determined that there were no other viable poles. A majority of these poles do have transformers. If they don't have transformers. They have uh, what you would call or what the utility companies call closers. They look like little C. It's a piece of equipment in the shape of a C that is at the top of the pole. It basically means that they can cut off the power to that pole. Um, I'm not sure how, but they cut, that is what is used to do, to determine whether or not they can. So if it has a closer on it, we cannot use it. If it has primary power in multiple directions, it cannot be used. If it has risers on it, which typically. Um, you know, you would see it coming from underground. It looks like a wire coming from the ground up to the top. We cannot use it. Um, so unfortunately. We do our best to avoid. Situations like this, you know, being in front of a school or a church or anything of that nature where we. Um, recognize that there might be a little bit more pushback. Um, but as I stated, unfortunately, there is no other pole on this. Street, six hundred feet in either direction that is a viable pole.
Something.
I, I would just add, I'm not sure of the specifics of. The height of the pole at two eleven Main Street, which I believe is where the police station is. I'm not sure of the availability of space. But I know that pole and looking at it right here is if there is a pole, I just don't know anything about that particular one is fifteen hundred feet away and uh. It may even be the case that uh, AT&T is either on it already or uh, there isn't availability or it is too far from the search area.
Something that would be helpful, um, whether it be for this, if we happen to meet on this again or for any future, um, is. I, I anticipating that these questions seem to come up every time. Why aren't you on polls in the area? And I appreciate and I do believe that you did. Some due diligence, looking at the area polls. It would be helpful to get a list of those polls and why they were excluded. Um, yeah, I'm looking at Google Street View, the one that's immediately across the street from the church. Uh, and this, or the school um, does have a transformer on it, at least from the picture that I'm seeing it looks like. And it certainly has a, you know, the T that goes across. The top with some extra power lines on top. Um, but uh, there's also one um, very, very nearby in front of the Thai restaurant that has almost nothing in front of it. Uh, or on top of it that um. You know, by, by my eye, looks even cleaner than the one in front of St. Bees. But I'm sure you looked at it. I would just have loved to know why and in that, uh, you know, those sorts of things can be educational to us and smooth the, the road. For future permits. So if you could put that into the back of your mind, would be great. Um, sure.
So, but real quick, I, I can address that one, the pole that's in front of the Thai restaurant. Um, it's technically on private property. And we cannot mount a small cell on private property. That was the initial pole that we were interested in. Um, and it was deemed again, not viable because it's private property. It's past the right of way.
Yeah, it looks, I mean, again, right, I know rights of way can vary relative to the road, but it. It looks only about three feet. Um, off the roadway.
Yeah, we had a survey company go out and survey it.
Okay.
Which is again, how, how I, that, that was the ideal pole. Um, like I said, we try to avoid situations like this. Um, and unfortunately, the one that we initially started. Or were interested in was just not viable.
Thank you for that. Jason?
Uh, just informational, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I did pull up the location of the pole from the latitude, longitude coordinates and. In addition to showing the location of the pole, it also shows a couple of other. Uh, references for how to refer to that location and two sixty-nine, two sixty-seven US twenty is what Google Maps describes it as.
Okay, even though that's across the street, that's, yeah, I, I appreciate that there, you know, if there's no address there. Uh, everybody does their best and I'm guessing somebody looked at Google Street View, put in the Latin long and. Um, and copy the same information. It's probably what happened. Uh, are there any other members of the public that would wish to speak on this at this time? I'm not seeing any, um. Oh, yes, I did promise Amy that we'd let her wait back in one more time. Amy, here you go.
Thanks, I just had to unmute. Um, one other thing, and it really doesn't have as much to do with the applicant, only a little bit. Is I was going to ask the Board of Selectmen if they had a fee that they charge or if they were going to consider doing an application in the future because I know. You can charge five hundred dollars to AT&T for these. And I looked into Burlington's rules and regulations and I can forward you all their information, but I talked to someone there today. And they actually do a peer review. They charge. For a peer review, so it's just not getting all the information. From the applicant. It's someone who represents the town that says, okay, these are the poles that are usable. This is how close the macro site is. They actually do have a spot they could use there. It's just something, when we did a cell tower in two thousand and fourteen, when I was on the planning board, we had a peer review. It's just something as a board you might want to look into in the future.
I appreciate that. I think there, there's definitely something worthy to be discussed there.
Okay, and I, and I'm also hoping that if this does get approved, that there could be some sort of condition that they do. Send a report that it. Is meeting the FCC regulations.
Okay, Amy, anything else before I send you back to the attendees?
Thanks, thanks for letting.
Thank you very much for the input. I really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Um, all right. Since we, that came up again, let me go back to the planning board list. So this is for those following along, uh, page twenty-nine of our full packet. Um, it is, it's actually from um, uh, our planning director, um. Based on planning board meeting uh, of August sixteenth. So I'm just going to read the four of these and then we can. Talk about whether we want to uh, consider. Um, putting any of these on there. Um. Part one, I think we have talked about already, which is move the installation to a telephone pole at least one thousand linear feet. From the Saint Bernadette's School to alleviate safety concerns. Um, I know we've already discussed that. Uh, item two is prohibit signage on the exterior of the installation, except for that necessary for identification and public safety. Item three I mentioned before, which was ninety days after the facility becomes operational. Require the applicant to demonstrate that frequency levels are within safety standards. And four, require that the applicant co-locate on an existing cell tower in lieu of installing several small wireless facilities to satisfy the demand. And I, I. Again, I think we've at least talked about that to some extent. Um. Uh, Mr. Dolan or anyone else, I'd, I'd love for you to um. To talk about items uh, two and three on that list and, uh, and I can repeat them if you want me to. Um, and, and see if you're willing to uh. To volunteer a couple, some information on those.
Absolutely. So uh, as far as signage on the exterior of the installation. Um, there is a reference uh, on our plans on. You see one up at the top, it says that on the antenna. There is a proposed um. Six by two inch notice sign placed opposite to each other at the bottom of the antenna. And that's for OSHA Public Safety uh. Uh, purposes, I, you know, it's negligible as far as whether it could even be seen. From the ground, something that's small or make out what it even is, but that is uh, required and you can see that on E. E two, three, that's required by federal law to have that up there. Um, and then as far as uh, bullet number three, uh, given the concerns of uh, uh, the board, uh, the um. Ms. Paretsky and others, uh, we would agree to uh, bullet number three that ninety days after. Uh, we initially install and operate that we actually have a, uh, we demonstrate that the frequency levels are within safety standards. Um, we, we would, we would uh, surely agree to that condition if it helped assuage any concerns folks had about our compliance with. Uh, the FCC guidelines.
And by demonstrating, you mean physically have somebody go out there with some sort of a receiver antenna and measure the signal strength?
We can do that, yes.
Appreciate it. Um. Members of the board or staff, any, any other questions or concerns on those items? Um, Mr. Hayes, I'll recognize you in just a second. I just want to see if anybody has any, any questions. Okay, Mr. Hayes, go ahead.
Uh, sorry, Julianne, I, I jumped ahead of you just one quick second. I, I would just suggest you. Clarify the language a little bit about measuring frequencies, uh. Wha- what you're really doing is measuring the uh, radio frequency emissions. And, and not. It, 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 it's a scientific thing, but I, just for a pointy clarification.
I, I think.
That's all, thank you.
I think that's valid. I, I appreciate that clarification. I'm sorry, Julianne, did you have your, I think you had your virtual hand up, yeah, which I didn't see because I was over in the attendees list.
I actually, um, but it's not about the planning board recommendations and thank you, Mr. Hayes, for. Telling us the exact terminology because it will probably be included in our motion, but um, can I ask a question of Kelly?
Sure, it's okay with me.
Kelly, you mentioned that the ideal pole is at the restaurant. Um, do you never put these things, these facilities on private property? Do you ever try to negotiate, you know, come to an agreement with private property owners?
Um, so we don't even get to that point. Unfortunately, the utility company, because it's their pole and it is on private property. Utility company does not let us attach to it. So, yeah, so it wouldn't make a difference whether the Thai restaurant said, yeah, sure, of course you can do it. Um, utility regulations won't allow us to do it.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Sure, conceivably, I'm sure if you want to do, you could negotiate a lease for um, to put up a new pole on private property. As are done with, with the tolerant and as, but I can appreciate um, not really wanting to do that. Um, any other questions or comments? Julianne?
So Mitch, are you saying that, that you believe that one option would be to put up a new pole? Across the street?
I, I, my suspicion is that. If they really wanted to, they could approach any private property owner. And say, hey, we'd like to put a new pole on your property. And we'll pay you, you know, X dollars per year to lease that space as I know companies do for the, the tall antennas. That are put up. Um, and then. Uh, AT&T or whatever the operator is, would, would own that pole and leased it from the company and they, you know, leased it from the, the business that's there for the property owner and, and do that. Um, but I can appreciate that what you're probably going to say is that's a lot of work. We'd really like to use an existing pole location. Um, but feel free to, to clarify, Mr. Dolan, if you so.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the town's uh, bylaws uh. Prioritize co-location and directly direct, and direct companies to do that because exactly that very thing is what. Planning boards and others uh, in land use planning and municipalities are trying to achieve less poles going up in the air. And uh, you know, to introduce a whole new pole that then adds a new. Uh, viewshed analysis and then folks that might not even live on that property. Even if you could get the approval, could come out and say, I don't want to look at that new pole. It, it just becomes a bottomless uh, hornet's nest. So uh, you know, guidance has always been for land use planning to use existing poles. To attach to those as opposed to hypotheticals as to whether a new pole could be aspirationally located on another property. And no one would have any objections to it.
Julianne?
Okay, another question. So um, we, we're provided a list of the, the abutters. Um, I guess this question goes to John. Were all of the abutters um, notified by certified mail and, and all of the green cards back?
Well, all the abutters are notified. Uh, I'm not sure if it was by certified mail or not. I believe typically they are. Um, so I don't know if we received all the green cards, but we definitely, uh, they're required to notify all the abutters.
Well, in meetings that I've attended at other committees, that all of the green cards had to be. Presented so that, that at least it was acknowledged that they all received a notification. And this is a very complicated thing here because who got the notification at the school and the church and how is that information disseminated? Feeling a little uneasy that um. That all of the uh, affect. That all of the affected parties. I I want to make sure that they got the information.
Julianne, I I absolutely hear you on that. I I think that. Might be a good lesson for how to proceed with additional, you know, future hearings on various topics. I think it would be. It would be good to know to to get that verification, but I appreciate that John wasn't prepared and doesn't doesn't have the green cards on his desk right now. We haven't done it. I don't believe we've done it before at at Board of Selectmen meetings, although I do think it's good practice. Any other questions or comments? Any other questions from the audience on last opportunity? Going once. Going twice. Members of the board, are we ready to close the hearing? Jason? You're muted, sir.
So I am. Mister Chair, I move that the board close this public hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Jason, seconded by Scott to close the hearing. Any other discussion? Jason, how do you vote?
I.
Julianne?
No.
Scott?
I.
I vote I, although not. Not terribly strongly. I I think there's a lot more that that this is a good learning lesson. But certainly the federal government limits our flexibility here. All right, so with that, the public hearing is closed. And is there an action the board would like to take? Jason?
Yes, Mister Chair, just for clarification before the motion, we did agree that. On the ninety day after operation. To have verification. Of the safety or the regulatory compliance.
And I would I would request that just for. Simplicity and comparative sake that Mister Hayes referenced page six of his report. Which had that nice little chart showing showing nine point three percent relative to the federal guidelines or eleven point nine relative. To the state guidelines, it would be good to do whatever test that allows you to just simply overlay actual on top of that. I don't know if Mister Dolan, Mister Hayes, you you can comment as to whether that's viable.
I I I I'm sorry, that would be up to the. Company that would, if they if they wish to hire me to do it, but can I do it? Absolutely, yes. I I've done something similar for the town of Wellesley, so it's. It it's complicated, but it can be done.
Okay, Mister Dolan, I'm not asking you to to commit to hiring any particular consultant to do that work, but but generally speaking, is that agreeable?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you. All right, what would the board like to do, Jason?
I'll see if I can get the phrasing right for this. I move the board vote to grant a location for and permission to AT and T to construct and maintain telecommunications wires. And wireless attachments and appurtenances. Including fiber optic cable, remote nodes and top mounted antennas. To be attached to a national grid utility pole located in the public right of way. Near two sixty seven dash two sixty nine Main Street in Northborough. With the condition that ninety days after the facility becomes operational. The applicant will demonstrate that radio frequency emissions. Are within the represented safety standards.
Second.
Motion made by, made and seconded and and thumbs up by. You you don't you don't get you don't get a vote, but I but I appreciate that we got the language right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board or staff before we before we vote? Scott, how do you vote?
I.
Julianne?
No.
Jason?
I.
I vote I, again reluctantly. I I don't think we have. Very much wiggle room here. I wish we had more. I do think that this is a bit of a learning process. I think some of the things brought up during this hearing could be helpful to us for future hearings, both of this type. And others, so I I'm sure we'll be talking about that in the near future such as. Being able to charge for staff time for this because I know this does take a lot of staff time. Being able to consider peer reviews and. And and certainly continuing to work with the planning board on their input on how we deal with these in the future. But my gut feeling is if we said no. We would be down a road where we'd be getting it anyway. So that's why I voted yes. All right. I think that concludes this item.
Thank you all very much for your consideration.
Sure, thank you very much. Next time, please don't put one of these in front of a school.
Agreed. That's up, well, that's up to Kelly. Of course, I would, I'm going to push them that way.
Don't throw me under the bus here.
No, 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 it it's the folks out in the field that are. They're they're stuck with whatever National Grid. Tells them they can do and the realities of the situation, but your your point is well taken. And to, you know, we'll continue to try to avoid those types of situations.
Much appreciated. Thank you. Have a good night. All right, I think we're back to our core group and. I'm going to go back to our agenda and. Now we can talk about a restaurant. Consideration for application of a common vic license as submitted by Jolly Rogers Diner LLC for premises located at two forty nine West Main Street. Roger, I saw you in here before, whoops, I gotta go over the attendees list. Jolly Roger, here we go. Roger, I'm going to bring you in. Roger, can you hear us? There we go. Roger, if you could. At least unmute yourself so we can, we can hear you because I'm sure we'll have a couple of questions. I'll leave it up to you whether you want your video on or not. Anyway, let's let's get started. John, you want to quickly walk us through this?
Yeah, so to common victory license, this is for two forty nine West Main Street. This is the former. Restaurant that was owned by Tommy Lowe, formerly known as Two Doors Down. So at this point, my understanding is a simple change of ownership. All aspects of the business otherwise are going to remain the same. And so if the board were to entertain this this evening, the recommendation would be. To approve it subject to satisfactory inspection by the building, fire and and health departments.
Yes, Roger, welcome to our meeting and and congratulations. I I have been aware of Roger's ambitions to open this restaurant for a number of months. And I'm very, very excited that it's gotten this far. And I particularly this, you know, the the restaurant that was at that location two doors away was was a great place. It was sad when it closed, but understand these things happen, so. Having another restaurant. That is somewhat somewhat unique in its styling move into that. That location would be great. Why don't you tell us a little bit about about the restaurant and about when you anticipate opening?
It's going to be a breakfast lunch restaurant. I specialize in smoked meats. Homemade sausage, brisket. Pulled pork, chicken, all smoked. The rest of it will be like your regular pancakes, eggs, omelets and things like that. And lunch will be mostly sandwiches and daily specials. I plan on, I'm hoping to open in two to three weeks. It depends. Now I'm trying to get staff. Which. I have to try a little harder, I think, because I'm not being very successful.
Understood. I know that's a that's a challenge all around these days. Members of the board, any any questions? Julianne?
Yeah, where does the smoking take place?
Right now I have a food truck that has a smoker attached to it and I've been using that. Otherwise I'd go to, I, the food truck is also, I'm part of a commissary out in West Boylston and I could go there and do it.
And that wonderful smell will.
Yeah, my neighbors kind of love and hate me because all their kids ask them, what are we having for dinner? It smells good.
Excellent. I don't think we have any other, any other concerns unless any of the board members have have any other questions. I will entertain a motion.
Mister Chair. I move the board vote to approve the application for a common victory license as submitted by Jolly Rogers Diner LLC for premises located at two forty nine West Main Street. With the conditions that the licensee receives satisfactory inspections by the fire, building and health departments.
Second.
Motion made by Jason, seconded by Scott. Any other discussion? All those in favor, Julianne?
I.
Jason?
I.
Scott?
I.
I also vote I, vote as unanimous in favor. Congratulations, Mister Convery. I am looking forward to hearing about your opening day. Please let us know.
I will, no.
And. Can't wait.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Roger. Alrighty, next up, we've got Apple Fest, so I'm going to bring in. I think we have Michelle Gillespie here.
And then Skip and Pat Doyle are probably showing up under the Northborough Rotary Club.
Correct. Hey, we've got a little gang over there in. In Apple Festland. You go ahead and introduce yourselves, please.
Hi, my name's Michelle Gillespie. I chair the Apple Fest Committee and we have some of our members here. Karen Brewster, Pat Griffin and Cheryl Scally. Also on here should be Pat and Skip Doyle. And they'll probably start off with making the request to open up Blake Street for the street fair. So if we can start with that first, we'd appreciate it.
Sure. Hi, Pat. Hi, Skip.
Hello there. Know which one of it's, I I could change the name, but that's okay. You know, it's us.
Very good. So so I I certainly know and and much of the town knows that a great tradition of Apple Fest is the street fair run by the Northborough Rotary Club. And tell us a little bit about what's happening this year, if you could.
So the. People of Northborough have. Selected you. And and of course, John is the chief cook, so thank you for allowing us to be here. So we've joined you tonight in order to ask that Blake Street. Be closed to the public on. September seventeenth from seven o'clock in the morning until five o'clock in the afternoon.
To allow the Rotary Club to conduct the Apple Fest Street Fair. Of course, we're saying that early and and I I just saw a look on Michelle's face. It only means that people will be coming in to start to set up their booth. Actually, they'll be starting on Friday night. So we could, you know, usually we we stay out of the road, so we don't have to have the road closed on Friday night, but they usually close it. Early Saturday morning and then we bring the the vendors in. It looks like it's. Weatherwise, it's going to be an amazing day. It looks like the perfect day for Apple Fest, crisp and fall like and. Not, the only problem, a little bit of sun, so you're going to need tents and sun sun lotion, but we've got. A large number of vendors this year. We've got a lot of vendors coming from out of town. They're not just Northborough people. We've got. A number of Westborough groups that are going to be with us. And we will be having lots of food. We've got a great food group coming. Lots of Northborough restaurants are going to be with us, so it's going to be fun. We were looking at last year's pictures and it was funny when it happened, we didn't realize how many people there were there, but it was well attended. And so we're hoping we can probably double it this year and looking at the days of old when the street fear was so well attended, you couldn't move. So that's what we're hoping for. And so that's what we're asking the. The Board of Selectmen to do is to close the street to traffic on Saturday.
So I have already contacted the businesses. That are that are affected. By by Blake Street. And everybody's okay with that. It it appears as as though the Tush. Our newish restaurant last year, they were just opening. And they did not. Have the staff to. Conduct themselves on that very day. But this year. They seem to be doing a great deal of business and they hope to have. Some of their products out in front of their store. This year.
Great to hear.
So we hope to see you all. Absolutely.
Any questions from either members of the board or staff for the Northborough Rotary Club regarding the street fair? Before we take action on that? Okay, and Michelle, I'll bounce it over to you for some more Apple Fest information in a second, but let's dispense with the street closing. Someone like to make a motion to that effect?
Yes, Mister Chair, I move we vote to close Blake Street. On Saturday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty two, between the hours of seven AM and seven PM for the annual Apple Fest Street Fair.
I believe it's five PM.
Five, we'll be out of there by before five.
I'm sorry, did I not see five PM? I misread it.
It's okay.
Okay, so the motion is seven AM to five PM, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'd like for Scott to say that just because he made the motion.
Yeah, and I don't know what happened with my mouth between my eyes and my mouth. So once again, between the hours of seven AM and five PM. For the annual Apple Fest.
Thank you very much. All right, motion been made by Scott, seconded by Jason. Any other discussion? Jason, how do you vote?
I.
Scott?
I.
Julianne?
I.
I also happily vote I. Congratulations, vote is unanimous. You're welcome to stay on the line while we move on to to Michelle and friends. Michelle. Introduce yourself, see see who you're with here and and tell us a little bit more about Apple Fest, which is is back and stronger than ever, it looks like.
Yeah, so this is our thirty second year of Apple Fest. And as you know, as Pat had indicated, last year was really a great year, was a very robust year. And most of the events are actually downtown. So on Saturday, we have several anchor events that we have going on. The first event and Karen's behind us from VC four T. I'm a member of it as well, but we run the five K road race that starts at. Registration starts at eight AM and the race starts at nine AM and that's at the Lincoln Street School. Middle, I'm sorry, the middle school. And then what happens from that is that most of the other events start to, people gather for them and that's really downtown. And that's the farmer's market, which is sold out. They're expected to have a good crowd down there on the Town Common. And then we have the street fair, which has probably, I think. That I think it's like forty to fifty vendors going on at the street fair. And then next door, Trinity Church, they're having a big event over there where they're having an open mic and they have a craft fair going on there. And then if you go across the street to the library, they have their book sale over there. And if you go a couple of doors down to the museum, it's open with an Art and Bloom and the Historical Society Open. And most of all, those events are just clustered downtown for people to park and walk around in the downtown, which is. Really, all what we want is people to be out and walking up and down Main Street. The event that's happening a little further down and that's probably more age specific. Is related to the police department, which is having their second annual bike rodeo. And that's again, more age specific to younger kids. Who bring their parents in the bike there. And those are pretty much the day events for Friday.
The Saturday.
For Saturday, I'm sorry, for Saturday. Yeah, and then those are the day events for Saturday. And then we start after the evening, we go into the chicken barbecue and into the fireworks. So the American Legion has a chicken barbecue from four to six PM, Karen. And then the fireworks start at five to nine PM. So those are all of our Saturday events. Now, people have asked and there's a little bit of going on on social media. Why is the fireworks not in the Apple Fest guide? That's because the Apple Fest guide has to be printed. Early in August and the decision at that time was not made whether or not we did not have approval or not. To have the fireworks, we were waiting to see if conditions would change. They did change. The fire chief. Granted us permission, so we'd all like you and your family or friends and neighbors. To go spread the word that the fireworks are on at Algonquin Regional High School, starting at five PM. Is when we have the concert, the moonwalks, the barbecue and all those events. And the fireworks usually kick off around eight fifteen or eight thirty. So just to get out to the public, that's the reason it wasn't the guide is because at that time, because of the kitchen conditions, we had not approval yet. And then if we can move just back a little bit to Friday, Friday is our kickoff day. Our youngest of residents go to see. Our youngest of residents go to see Mr. Bubble and Mr. Bubble really caters to our small toddlers down at, um, the Ellsworth McAfee Park. Most of them, I would say Pat goes with me. They're like two and three year olds, some four year olds down there. The kids enjoy it. It's about an hour. And then we go over to some of our older season, um, residents who are at the senior center for a senior luncheon. And then at night, the Northborough Ed Foundation has their dance and gala event at Juniper Hills Golf Course. These are all traditions that have happened over many years. And then on Saturday, Sunday, we, uh, progress over to the Pancake Breakfast in the morning. Starts out with Boy Scout Troop One. And then at eleven AM, we start the classic car show down at, um, Northborough Shopping Plaza. Um, where most, a lot of the classic cars, we hope will start off our parade, which starts at two PM. Um, and the staging area will be on Lincoln Street at one PM. And, uh, after that, we will also have the Taste of Northborough back at the middle school. And that will start at four PM. So we have a lot of events that haven't been around that the parade wasn't around since COVID. It'll be first time we're having the parade since two thousand nineteen. That's a great thing. And we're having people who feel comfortable to start to participate in the parade. So we feel like we'll have a reasonable parade to present and it'll probably grow as we come more and more out of the, uh, COVID. And then as well as the Taste of Northborough as well. So, you know, we're getting, uh, you know, COVID in twenty twenty, we didn't have much of everything but a virtual. We, last year was a great year on twenty twenty-one and we're expecting a great year now in twenty twenty-two.
Thank you very much, Michelle. Um, yeah, I, I'm very happy, particularly the, the parade and Taste of Northborough are two of the things that I've always enjoyed that those are back this year. Um, so a jazz festival at First Parish Church and Pancake Breakfast at the Legion and everything else. So, uh, uh, congratulations on putting it together. We're looking forward to, to wonderful weather. Um, we hope we can, uh, we can make that happen too and, and have a great weekend. Um, and I think I read, uh, John, not to put you on the spot, but I think there's going to be a dunk tank at the, uh, the fireworks event and, and you might be in it.
Somehow I let Joanne Sharp talk me into, uh, the, the dunk tank, but, but I'm only doing it because the police chief, the fire chief are going to be joining me as well. So it's going to be a question of who draws the most cash.
Yeah. So I, 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 I didn't want to put John on the spot, but I will now as well as, um, our police chief and fire chief. So we, those three individuals, we've part of a dunk tank at the fireworks. Um, and, uh, we were putting out, um, to social media and other organizations, the, uh, first, um, and highest, uh, bid, uh, gets the first throw for each individual. So, um, you know, you'll start to see that happen tomorrow. So, and then that individual will then take it and put it to their, um, charity of their choice or organization of their choice. And then after that, people can line up and see if they can hit the target to, uh, dunk the police chief, fire chief and town administrator. It's all a good thing. It's a lot of, you know, laughter and, uh, this is a community event to bring community together, being positive, um, about our community and this is a good thing. And I appreciate them being good sports and adhering to, uh, Joanne Sharp's request and.
She's a tough woman to say no to.
Yeah.
Totally get it, get it over with before the sun goes down, so. Going to be freezing.
The police chief said he was going to wear a wet suit. That's not acceptable.
By the way, I can still put my bid in on both these guys, right? I might win the bid. So I have to get out of the tank so I could throw the ball at these two guys.
And knowing that highest bid goes to a charity or an organization of a choice, so it's all good. Yep. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I don't believe there are any formal actions that we need to take, but this is obviously a, a fantastic event to promote and, uh, I know we're all looking forward to it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. So just spread the word fireworks on, uh, Saturday night.
Saturday evening. Jason, you had your hand up?
Uh, yeah, Michelle, if you could send me the dimensions of the dunk tank target, I would like to set something up in my backyard so I can practice before.
Jason, you're a hockey player. Nobody's worried. Oh, as long as he can't use a hockey stick, we're safe.
Yeah. I will make sure I do that tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll see you all this weekend on Apple Fest weekend.
Thank you.
See you all Saturday.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, everybody. And busy, busy evening. Uh, White Cliffs update, we have, uh, for a Pelletier's, um, whoop, I'm sorry, we have a, oh, I thought we had a hand up for a second. We had a hand up for Amy. I don't know if Amy was there for, with an Apple Fest question, but we promised to let anybody in. So, uh, Amy, I'll allow you to talk.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, Amy. I apologize if I missed you earlier.
Sorry, this has to do with Apple Fest. Um, Amy Peretzky. And I'm on the master plan implementation committee. And I just wanted to let the residents know that the consultants for the downtown visionary study revitalization study will actually be at the farmer's market from ten to three on Saturday and they're looking for input from residents. So I just wanted to let people know that they'll be down there looking for input on the downtown vision, visioning study.
That's fantastic. Thank you very much, Amy. Okay, I think now we're ready to move along to White Cliffs. Um, Michelle and friends, I'm going to pull you back out to attendee now.
Bye.
Bye. Thank you very much.
Bye.
Okay, so, um, I see that, uh, that Brett is here. Um, John, you want to give us an intro to?
Yeah, I'd be happy. Be happy to set the table a little bit. So as you know, through the pandemic, uh, prior to the pandemic, White Cliffs was, uh, working, um, the White Cliffs Committee is working pretty strongly on a feasibility and reuse study, which we ultimately completed. Uh, then the pandemic hit and, uh, this project had to be shelved for obvious reasons. Um, we've picked it up and started running again. Uh, essentially, uh, this year, just prior to the end of the fiscal year, uh, the committee, uh, was looking forward to moving ahead with formulation of a request for proposals to put it out to the public, uh, to try to find a public sector partner that might want to come and work with the town. Either taking the facility off our hands entirely or partner with us or in some form or shape, uh, partner with the town to bring White Cliffs back, uh, into use again. And so as part of that, we worked with the Community Preservation Committee. They had some, uh, funding remaining from fiscal twenty twenty-two of their administrative fees. And, uh, using those, uh, funds, we were, uh, went out, uh, we sought our own, uh, a request for, uh, consultants that could help us out. Committee went through a, uh, series of interviews and ultimately selected, uh, Brett Pelletier of Kirk and Company. And in your packet is, uh, a nice memo from Kirk, uh, uh, I'm sorry, from Brett introducing himself and his company. And, uh, at this point, at this stage of that process, uh, Brett is basically getting input for what that RFP might look like. What are the things that the town would like to see, uh, in terms of a potential reuse? As well as a criteria by which we would evaluate potential proposers. And obviously he rather than just try to put something together, Brett, uh, one of the things I think that won the committee over to, um, Kirk and Company and Brett as the representative was his commitment to seeking input and, uh, and information prior to formulation, formulating the RFP criteria. So he's making the rounds. Uh, he is, uh, going to be meeting with the planning board, historic district commission. He's obviously met with the, uh, White Cliffs Committee, uh, Master Plan Implementation Committee and the Board of Selectmen here tonight. So, uh, I'm going to, uh, let Brett, uh, introduce himself a little bit and talk about what he's seeking from you this evening, but there's no votes, there's no approvals that are necessary. It's really for you a chance, a chance for you as a board to get an update on where we are with the project and, uh, provide, uh, input. Um, uh, both tonight and follow up. If you have comments following up after tonight to Brett about the priorities of, uh, how this facility might be reused and how we might go about evaluating potential partners in terms of bringing that reuse to a, a reality. So I'm very pleased to have Brett Pelletier, uh, on board with us, uh, so far. He's a very good listener and he's compiled some great information. And I should mention, as we move forward through this process, one of the things, uh, again, one of the strengths that Brett Pelletier and Kirk and Company brought to this, uh, process is their connections and their networking, because it's not just about putting an RFP together, but it's also about drumming up interest. And, uh, and going out and finding people who might be interested in your project, who otherwise may not be looking. I always draw the analogy, it's like we've created this unique job description. Now we need to try to fill it. And if you just advertise it, um, chances are you may not get anybody. You need to beat the bushes and recruit. And all that is, is what we intend to partner with, uh, Kirk and Company to achieve. So tonight, again, Brett will come on, tell you a little bit about him, the company. But it's really a chance for the board to provide their, a little bit of input tonight and to bring you up to speed until all the exciting things that have happened with the, uh, project, uh, recently over the last couple of months. So with that through the chair, I would turn it over to Brett Pelletier from Kirk and Company.
Thanks, John. Brett, I think you're going to unmute yourself.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, uh, I appreciate having the opportunity to, to chat with you. I, um, that, that was a great introduction, John. Thank you very much. Basically, I just wanted to make myself available. Give you an update. I won't read my memo. You've had time to digest it, um, I'm sure. But I can answer any questions you might have on that, but I'll make myself available to answer any questions, but also to give you sort of an update as to what our process is, what we plan to do. Um, and, and it's, it's topical too, because, um, as, as John was saying, that, that it really, real estate is about connections. And I am currently, um, at a, at a national conference of counselors of real estate and in Boston. I was, it's a couple of days this week and today was the first day and I've already spoken to three people who came up to me out of the blue and said, can we talk about that, what, that White Cliffs project you're working on? So, you know, I'm, uh, these are all great signs, all of the conversations I've been having and the interest that has sort of percolated out of the various, um, you know, emails and phone calls and conversations that I've had. Um, so I'm, I'm really quite pleased with how, how the, the community, sort of a really diverse, um, real estate operator, um, individual community is responding to our, our initial due diligence. And that's really what we're doing right now is, and it's sort of highlighted in, in, um, bright yellow on the memo if, if you have it in color. But task one effectively has been to, um, do a tremendous amount of due diligence and um, really, John said, you know, beating the bushes and, and having a conversation with anybody and everybody who will listen to me, who might have um, either an interest in the property, know someone who might, or have an adjacency to the historic preservation and adaptive reuse or hospitality or any other, um, potential reuse scenario. Um, and that's what we've done. I've created a database. We're up to about fifty-two, I think, names that are on the list of folks who are, um, either interested or adjacent professionals or real estate developers or local people who are interested in potentially putting a team together to respond to the RFP. And, um, and we're, we're, we continue to cultivate that list and, um, it really is, uh, tremendously, um, rewarding. I, I have a, I have a phone call with someone and they said, you know, I might not be interested, but here's two or three people you need to call. Um, and so it's been really, um, a really, you know, I say momentum gets, it gets momentum and that's exactly what is, what is the, the, my hope, the strategy to successfully be. So we're doing that right now. I'm doing that right now and, um, in the next, uh, few weeks, we'll be putting together the formal sort of meet of the, the RFP, which will then go out to RFP on the street and, and leaving about sixty days for responses and, you know, that intimate sort of back and forth with potential suitors in touring the building and answering questions and providing information that is, um, has been really forthcoming. We have a tremendous amount of data and information about White Cliffs, which, um, really helps people get their heads around a complex, uh, real estate problem. So, um, all, all things that, um, that are, that are, um, encouraging, certainly. So that's my, um, my shtick and, uh, my little presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions or have a little discussion or what you, use the time however you feel. And, um, if you think you want to marinate on it for a little while, you're free to call me or email me at any time you would like.
Through the chair, if I may, Brett, would you, uh, be so kind as to just go through the, um, the five major criteria that essentially the committee has settled on, uh, in terms of what's important in this process? Because that's really, I mean, to a large extent, what you're trying to get from the Board of Selectmen, the public, the boards and committees. Uh, so can, can you speak to those, the, the five that we've sort of settled on, uh, that are going to be the, the, the real focus of the RFP?
Yeah, they're, the, the criteria are sort of bifurcated and I've kind of outlined that in the second page of the memo. But the, the first are sort of the, the softer, um, criteria. And I say softer, not, not, they're not technical, um, um, items. They are the things that really the committee and, and feel are really important, that they feel the community demands. And the first is top, you know, the top, um, at the top criteria was basically restoration and the preservation of the structure. Um, really that was, you know, there's, there's no real interest in seeing someone tear this down and build a, a few housing units, all right? Um, it's the whole reason you bought the thing in the first place is to preserve it. And, you know, it's a really great asset. I think it adds a lot of value. Uh, the second is creation of some kind of public access or a public connection within the community, which doesn't necessarily mean that the building is open twenty-four, seven to the public, but it, that, that there is some amount of access the public can, um, can attain, whether that may be as meeting space, that be as, um, you know, something that is open to the public as a, as a restaurant or a function facility or something like that. Um, really to, to continue that connection, that this, the White Cliffs is part of the community. It's been part of the community and we'd prefer it not to, um, you know, disappear into, um, into the abyss and, you know, we never see it again. And, you know, the third, which was very strong amongst the, the folks we had conversations with was reduce the, the burden on municipal budget, right? This is, um, ideally getting this um, asset to be the risk taken on by someone else who is not going to be subject to um, all the rules and requirements that a, that a government body would be and the costs that go along with that. And, you know, you've done yeoman's work by preserving this thing and stabilizing it. Um, and, and now hopefully we can get somebody to take that on and, and run with it. Relieving, you know, the, the municipal budgets somewhat. Um, you know, on the, lower on the list, but still really, I think, important were some consideration of grounds and landscaping, which I think also connect with number five, which is, uh, that it's responsive to the master plan and downtown revitalization plan. Really linking this great building that's been there forever, you know, uh, to this new revitalization effort, creating a connection between that great big white building up on the hill, um, to, you know, what's going on. Um, you know, downtown. Um, and so those are the five sort of softer criteria where we have evaluation criteria after that, that, um, you know, include team and respondent qualifications and experience, their capacity, both, um, technical and, and financial. Um, their proposal quality, which would somewhat be reflected in those five softer criteria. And, you know, li- last on the list, I think is the project feasibility or pro forma. Um, we're really looking to not stress test a pro forma and poke holes in it and say, hey, you're not going to be able to do this because all of your sources aren't, aren't guaranteed, but to say, this is logical. It reconciles with the, the developer or the owner or the operator's ability to get projects like this done in the past. And there's a reasonable level of confidence that they'll be able to perform in the future. So that's, those are the, those are the criteria that we have discussed. I'm certainly happy to discuss any more and take any more considerations. Um, the, the process has been, and my guidance has been generally open, uh, rather than more restrictive. RFPs tend to fail with strange projects like, uh, not strange projects, but unique projects like this. When they're overly restrictive, but also when they're, um, unnecessarily broad. Um, you can't just go out and say, we're looking for anybody and anything, who, who knows what, give us your ideas. Because it means that the communities doesn't really know what they want. They don't really understand, um, how they're going to achieve, um, these criteria. And the, being overly restrictive, if we go out and say, we want a hospitality user to buy the property X, Y and Z, you're going to significantly limit the pool of, of candidates. You're going to, going to have, have to respond. So a happy medium of, of giving sincere guidance as to what the community is looking for, but also not being overly restrictive um, in that guidance.
Thank you, Brett.
Sure.
Questions or comments from the board?
Thank you, Brett. Questions or comments from the board? Scott?
Yeah, thanks. And Brett, yeah, thank you so much. And, and having watched the prior meetings and discussions you've had with the White Cliffs Committee, I think, I think what's been good is, is what you just mentioned, right? The balance of the requirements, allowing those that might propose to be creative and, and look at those uses. And then just, it was really kind of contagious then, your enthusiasm and, and being pleased at the, at the number of kind of response and interest that you've, you've been able to collect so far. So not a question to you, but more of just, I think we made the right choice in bringing you on as a consultant. And it's, it's really been great to see you make those connections and, and beat those bushes and, and, and see what's coming from it. So thank you for that.
Certainly. And, and, you know, thank you very much for the kind words and I appreciate your, your confidence. I, I, you know, I would just say that I talked, when we talked to all of these people, it's, you know, it's never speculative real estate development and especially adaptive reuse of very unique structures and that have posed a reuse challenge in the past. They're never simple deals. And so you talk to people as much as you can and they get comfortable as much as they can with the proposition of what you have to offer. You know, and you can't guarantee that they'll show up with qualifications and money at the end of the day, but you hope they will. And certainly there, there, no one has said, I'm, then go away. I'm not interested. This is crazy. You're, you're crazy. So that, that's a good sign too, but, you know, certainly when you have quite a large list of people who leave the call by saying, keep me on the list. I want to know more about this. Those are good, those are good indications. This is, this isn't a no brainer and it's not a, a home run necessarily for, for anybody. None of these deals are. But certainly, hopefully, we can draw up enough interest to, to get a few people who are serious and have the capacity to perform.
Thanks, Scott. Julianne, you had your hand up as well?
Yeah. Hi Brett. I'm also on the White Cliffs Committee. So I've met you before. But, um, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but after, after your presentation, we're going to vote on continuing the committee because the committee technically was supposed to end in 2019. But it would be helpful if you gave us some idea of how long do you think a committee will be involved in this project? Do you see us done in a year, two years? Like, do you have any idea?
I think it's difficult to say without understanding what the ultimate deal structure is going to be. You know, if, if, if the, the town decides that the, the best respondent is someone who will come in, you know, a fee transaction, they will take title and the town will go away and hold a preservation restriction or something at some point in the future, then it's a relatively short period of involvement. But if there's a long-term ground lease or there's a joint venture type structure where the town continues to own the land and leases the building or some other mechanism, that is a longer term relationship for sure. And it all depends on how long the, the process. Let's put it this way. So whenever I work with dispositions, you know, the, the buyers always want very, very long due diligence periods and very, very long, you know, sort of vesting periods. I think, well, we, we will eventually close in 365 days or 520 days or something like that. And my, I have never allowed that to happen in any of the deals that we've structured. You know, we vary between 15 days of all cash closing to, you know, 45 days of contingent closing, or at least to wrap up a deal. And that's to reduce risk to you. We don't want you to be hanging around as a town in limbo for the next year and a half, while some potential owner or developer or buyer is arranging financing or arranging. We want you to be as clean a deal as possible. So unless you think that's a good idea, I would suggest you shorten the time horizon significantly to get the, the deal done sooner rather than later. But that's a little bit up to the town, how, how much they're involved in the future. I think, I think logically, there will always be something to do with the White Cliffs, especially if you're going to hold a preservation restriction or they're going to grant you a preservation easement on the property. And likely they're going to request, well, I don't know what they're going to request, but there's going to be work to be done in the future, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Brett. Appreciate the presentation and the work that's taken place so far. I wonder if you could just comment on like how the landscape has changed through the pandemic? And, uh, you know, the, the way deals proceed or, or perhaps the kinds of, you know, repurposing or whatever that might take place, given the effects of the pandemic on different types of businesses.
Sure. So, you know, the, the hardest hit sectors of the real estate market during the pandemic were generally speaking high-touch things. Retail, especially street level retail was, was clobbered pretty good. And so was hospitality, but, but the more on the hotel and full service side of things, where people just weren't traveling to go to hotels. They didn't need conference centers. They, the large cities and Boston was really walloped, but good. Those are coming back. But, but I think what's, what's, multifamily has been strong the entire time. Office has always been kind of a waning, waxing and waning. And I don't think that's really appropriate for the site anyway. And biomedical research is also very robust, but then again, that's not really terribly appropriate for this site. But, but I think the, what's remarkable is the number of deals that have been done. And I was talking to two or three operators who, what their hospitality, various flavors of hospitality. One was a, a couple that bought a farm in Rhode Island and converted it to a 13 or 14 room inn with apple orchards and, you know, livestock and a real kind of country gentleman experience. And, you know, in the middle of nowhere in Rhode Island. And another group that was doing a similar, you know, experiential hospitality on the North Shore with various historic properties. And they said, we've been, you know, the pandemic actually gave us a tremendous amount of opportunity to source these deals and put these deals together and gave us some downtime to build the thing out. And so, you know, it's a, it's, you know, for every one story about things going sideways, you hear another story about the opportunities that are presented. And I don't think it's out of line to say this property just doesn't fit into the traditional mold of what is a real estate transaction. And so it's, it's not influenced nearly as much. And if you were, you know, looking at a site to build a hotel from scratch, I've got red flags that I can let you borrow. But, you know, this just isn't that traditional real estate transaction. It's more experiential. It's more entrepreneurial. It's more sort of grassroots. And, and I think that really is, I think what we're going to see the end use to be is, is not something that is traditional, but something that's very, very creative and entrepreneurial.
Right. Thank you very much. I appreciate your perspective.
I'll say this one thing last. I, I was, I mentioned this at one of our last meetings that I spoke with someone who, who two years ago was operating a, a table at a, at a local farmer's market. And now two years later, it's got, you know, a 10-room hotel in and, you know, catering business. And just a trajectory is extraordinary. And it was all based because this person had come across an opportunity, was presented with an opportunity, was able to put together a team of qualified individuals to respond to the opportunity. And, you know, had not there been for that opportunity, perhaps the, the jam stall at the local mark, farmer's market would still be working. But, you know, now it's a, it's a full-fledged hospitality business. And so it's, it's hard to know where these things come from. That's why we try to bang as many people over the head as we can.
Thank you. Again, my only comments are primarily around expedience and finance that, you know, the town voted to approve this, the purchase of this in 2016. We obviously had a, an interruption for a couple of years with the pandemic, but it's, it's, it's been a little while. So I appreciate Brett, your optimism that this would go hopefully faster than, than slower. And I know the town isn't terribly interested in spending a lot more money on this, but if we can see a positive outcome, I think that's what we're all after. So I'm hoping this will get there. And I also want to say, John certainly knows that I've expressed some frustration that the, either the, the White Cliffs Committee nor the Board of Selectmen has had an opportunity to tour the building since it was acquired by the town. So that will happen probably as part of this process since potential bidders, if you will, will, will certainly need to see the inside of the buildings. John and I have talked about getting a tour for the Board of Selectmen and the White Cliffs Committee roughly at the same time, probably not coinciding with those tours, but probably the same day. Certainly be, be optional, not mandatory to members. And I know many members of the public would love to see inside. This is not going to be a public tour. We just, we just can't do that yet. Hopefully someday we'll, we'll get to a point where we can have that sort of a thing, once it's in somebody else's hands and the proper restorations have been done. Sure. I didn't have any other, other questions. I don't see any, any other hands up. I don't know if staff had any, anything else to add at this point?
Just if I may, just that the process has been designed to get going with this over the summer. Get this out on the street. It'll marinate out there for 60 days, give some time to, to review. And the idea is if, when we come back around, we're looking at, you know, next April's town meeting, if there's action that needs to be taken, either appropriations that need to be made or disposition of real property in any form, all that requires town meeting approval. So it won't be a decision that's made by the White Cliffs Committee. There may be a recommendation, but ultimately it would be, it would be town meeting who would, who would take action. But the idea is to get to that point. And then however long, as Brett said, you know, depending on the complexity of the structure and the deal and the partners, you know, how long does it take to, to bring it to fruition? But the idea is to get this done so that we can take action at town meeting upcoming in April. So that's, that's the game plan.
Thanks, John. We do have a hand raised from the audience, Lisa Mocelli. I'm going to allow you to talk. Lisa, welcome.
Well, thank you very much, Lisa Mocelli, 13 Maple Street. As many know, the White Cliffs is very, very dear to me since I own a property, also one of its properties. And I think that one of the questions I wanted to ask Brett was, you did a market analysis for us in 2015, about 36 pages worth. Have you, have you found some comparisons from that to today? And I'm sure that you probably went through this process back then to be able to make that report. Do you see things changing at all or?
I think the asset is in a different place than it was seven years ago or so. And I think the market has evolved significantly. I think when we were looking at it previously, there was some consideration for office space that would have, would have been probably logical. I think the world has evolved and gotten more sophisticated for these types of assets. And the, while it's not easier to develop them, there are certainly more options to redevelop historic properties like this in, in communities like yours. There, people recognize value and entrepreneurial spirit is alive in these uses. And I think it's becoming more a part of the nomenclature of the real estate business and the historic preservation business to work together to do those sorts of deals. So I think it's just a different, it's a different world. Doesn't seem like that long ago, but it, there's a lot that has changed with the asset and with the, with the potential pool of, of buyers.
Well, I can, I can agree with you on that. And I would love to see that back in its, in its old glory because it's. And the other question I do have is, is when you're putting this RFP out, I mean, the, the article that we did pass was pretty specific. And there wasn't any breaking up of the land. This is 6.5 acres. That was supposed to be acquired and preserved as well, as well as the building. And so when you're looking at the RFPs, are you coming up with creativity in breaking some of that land up?
So when we're putting together the RFP, we're not prescribing any, anything specific as it relates to what any user would do with the property or it's, or it's, it's some site. We, we're going to respond, you know, the committee and the town ultimately will be responsible for evaluating whether or not they think the proposal that is presented is appropriate. But my, my own opinion is, and I don't want this to color any potential bidders or respondents or users or committee members or anything, is that the land is, there isn't so much extra land in the best possible spot to subdivide. So I think it would be a tricky subdivision anyway. What's good is there's quite a lot of room to use. And what's even better is the bits that are flat, the parking lot to the rear of the site and surrounding the, the building are quite flat and quite large. And so that gives a tremendous amount of flexibility to end users to, to, to either reutilize that space for something else or to build on that space. You know, where the, where the old ballroom area is. So, so there's a lot of flexibility. It, it just doesn't, I'm not an engineer or a land use planner, but looking at the site from the ground, it doesn't appear as though there's a logical way to subdivide too much of the land. So that would be my, I, I wouldn't imagine you'd see, you know, a lot of intensive subdivision uses. Just doesn't, just doesn't seem to fit on the site appropriately. And there's some topographical issues to, towards the, the, what is that, the backside north? But we, you know, that is, we would entertain proposals. We're not restricting the proposals to say you can or cannot do this or that with the land.
Well, what will you do with the, with the way the laws are set up to tell you what you can do with the land thus far? Just let them know that we will go for variances or such?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Yeah, I think, I think what Brett is saying is let the responses come in, see what works best for the town and then, and then see what routes and what paths we need to go through to make that happen. I think my gut feeling is any response will probably require some town meeting action anyway, given, given the zoning and other things that are there. Whatever it is, you know, we, we have about six months to, to figure it out. So I hope we can figure it out.
Okay. Well, great. I look forward to seeing what you can come up with.
Thank you, Lisa. Any other members of the board or staff or public have any other, other questions before we move along? Right. Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure meeting you virtually. Look forward to meeting, meeting in person and seeing what takes place.
And the same. Thanks so much. And, you know, I, I'm so intrigued by Apple Fest that if I get an opportunity sometime this weekend, I'm going to swing by. Looks like fun.
It is really a lot of fun. It's a, it's a great day. It's, it's a great day to walk around and experience the town's culture. And anytime you want to, just ask anybody, what do you think about White Cliffs? And you will, you will get comments. I promise you that.
Well, I look forward to it.
Great.
Cheers. Thanks very much.
All right. Next on our agenda is also related to White Cliffs, which is to extension of the charge. John, you would propose, so again, to summarize, September, two thousand and seventeen, the White Cliffs Committee was formed, was given a two year charge. Two years lapsed while people were were honestly doing some work. Six months later, a pandemic started. Town staff was understandably distracted during that period of time, and I'm just glad we're back to it. So, John, you had proposed that the charge be extended through the end of calendar twenty twenty three.
Yeah, there's if I may, there's nothing magic about that. Just, you know, it gives a year, basically a little more than a year from today. And we'll see where we are. If it needs to be, I think it's important if it needs to be extended again or modified in some way. Then, you know, it could be taken up, but I just chose a year. Like, like I said, it can be longer, but I think at least at a minimum of a year, it would require the board to come back and look at it and see if it's working, if the committee is working in its current form, or if something needs to change. And I'll just add one thing. It's more than we were just busy. You know, the economy was shut down. Nobody was building hospitality suites or entertaining any of that. So really, we we went to lockdown mode to just preserve the structure as best we could to get through the pandemic. And, you know, we did a good job. Brett commented the place is in very good shape. He's toward it. And so so we did our job in holding things down, but but now it's a chance to move forward. But I chose I just a year extension, basically. The board can choose to do less or more, but that seems like a reasonable timeframe. Given the where we are in the process right now and what and the whole RFP effort and initiative, you know, rolling through.
Comments from the board? Would like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to extend the charge of the White Cliffs Committee through December thirty first, two thousand and twenty three.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, second advice Scott. Any other discussion? Julianne, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Congratulations to the White Cliffs Committee. You've got a little bit more than a year to go, but I would ask that, you know, through through John and through Julianne, our representative on on White Cliffs, to keep us abreast of what what goes on. I think we want to hear hear more rather than less and because we want to see this conclude both conclude and conclude successfully. So thank you very much to everybody. Pardon me as I bounce around my PDF again. And next up, we have DPW Director Scott Sharpton here. But first, I believe Suzanne Cox is going to join us. We're going to talk about a mural that is proposed to go. I apologize, I do have a hand up, which I'm going to quickly recognize. And the hand is still there. Okay, Laura Zaitin. Did you have a comment on the item that we just concluded or the next item?
The next one, I'll come back. Sorry.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. I recognize you in a bit.
Thank you.
And so we're going to talk about a mural and Suzanne, I am going to bring you in. Thank you very much for for bearing with us for the last two and a half hours. Suzanne, bringing in, if you could unmute yourself and at your discretion, open up your camera. Just let us know you're there. So Suzanne is from the representing the cultural council here. Speak again, see if we can hear you.
Hello?
Yes, hello, there you are. So so tell us about the mural that the cultural council is is proposing.
Great. Thanks for, Mr. Chair, for having me and allowing me to talk about this. I know Scott has the other half of the conversation. So hopefully between the two of us. You know, the cultural council, in addition to granting grants to our local artists every year to let them perform in the things in our local venues and our first culture fest on the common. Last year, we started a public art campaign to try to marry up with the master plan and add public art as a as a vehicle to to help make that a reality in the downtown and some of the key areas. Last year, we started the program with the Go Outdoors. And then in two thousand and twenty two, we it was it was a two thousand and twenty one project that went through two thousand and twenty two. The project this year was a mural because there had been some collaborative work done with with Scott and John on understanding desire for a mural and some of our local our local business. So we, the cultural council took that on from the the artistic point of view. It's a good partnership in what we do and fell in line with our with our our public art campaign. So to bring you up to date, it is the the Top Energy Gas Station in downtown Main Street where the mural, the side of the mural, side of the building that faces the common is the side where a mural is going to be painted. We've chosen a artist, a local Massachusetts based artist who her name is Sophie Tuttle. T U T T L E. She has a great muralist and up and coming, but still has done some great work in Worcester and throughout Lowell and in Medford. So we gave her a theme based on some input from key stakeholders of a small New England landscape with a focus on some uniqueness of Northborough. This artist is, her expertise or her area of muralist is nature. So it was, she was chosen to try to support the theme. We also are getting three designs. We had a part of our cultural council survey for a two thousand and twenty two grant cycle. We asked residents on that survey what what they thought defined Northborough as a question to help us kind of understand maybe where people's head were about the mural and about what they think of Northborough to use. And we got a lot of responses. Nature and community were very high, were probably the strongest responding areas as far as positive respondences of what people think of as defining our town. So going forward and asking her for ideas and proposals based on what you know, what the residents think defines Northborough. So that's where we are. We are looking to start the weekend soft start. There's a few things we're moving through, but the weekend, the week of September nineteenth, she projects maybe ten to seven to ten days to complete the mural. And it will be the wall facing the common, hopefully to help everybody who uses the common and the more events that go on in the common to have that as a backdrop against the the fence and the trees that are there. And that's a quick summary.
Thank you very much, Susan. I'm in in awe as to the number of wonderful things our cultural council has been doing over the last couple of years, far beyond sort of the the basics of just give away the grant money that that most towns do. So so thank you to you and the rest of your board. Does anyone have any questions for Suzanne? Okay, John, I know that we need permission from the property owner to paint the side of their building. My understanding is we received that permission and then that owner then went and sold the building to somebody else. So we need to get permission from the new owner. Where are we with that?
So we're in conversations, I believe we've got at least in talking, it's not going to be an issue. We just need to get the paperwork caught up. So we anticipate that happening in the next couple of weeks.
Fantastic. Thanks. And my assumption is you'll be in touch with Suzanne and her crew on 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 when the artist has the go ahead to go ahead and do that, because obviously we can't start the work until we have the permission. Yeah, good. There being no no other questions on the mural part of it. We have more some some money related things to do under this agenda item. But Suzanne, thank you very, very much and 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 good luck. I look forward to seeing the progress. I'm going to put you back in the attendees now. Thank you. Jason?
Thank you.
Do you have a question?
Sorry, no, no, just waving.
Okay.
Waving in, thanks.
Okay, so we have a couple of gifts to receive. I'd like to to separate them and first deal with the town common mural project. I think Scott, this was assigned to you. Do you want to go ahead and tell us a little bit about that and who's given us some money and how much and so forth?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we have a donor that came forward, Mr. Robert Tocanian. He's actually the same donor who provided the the kinetic art piece that you see at the common in kind of the rear right hand corner. It's a copper artwork that moves in the wind. So when we were visiting the site with him, we and Suzanne, we looked at the 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 building, the wall, and the idea started started flipping around and the decision was let's let's see if we can get a mural painted. That was a few years ago, quite a few years ago. And as we discussed earlier, the pandemic hits, the the brakes get hit. But here we are, you know, in the new normal. And we received a an offer of donation of four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to cover the costs, all the costs for the mural painting to be done by Sophie Tuttle. Suzanne just described her work. So I'm here before you in hopes that the the board is willing to accept the donation and I can continue working with the owner to get signatures for the agreement. So the artist's work can can proceed in a timely fashion to be done this fall.
Good. Any questions on this item for Scott? I'll entertain a motion on the the mural project funding.
So I I'm with this motion and I have a question. Does that, do I add in that this is contingent on getting acceptance from the new owner? Agreement from the new owner?
I don't think it's necessary in the motion. At this point, the donation's been made and we just need to accept the donation. If the project doesn't go forward, we return the donation.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move the board accept gift funds and authorize the DPW to extend such funds for a town common mural project pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty four, Section fifty three A.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Scott. Any other discussions? Let's see, Julianne, how do you vote?
Aye.
Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Thank you very much, Scott Sharpton here. And thank you very much for all the people putting this together, including, of course, the gentleman that donated the funds. And we have another half of this item for some money for a bench. Scott Sharpton here, why don't you go ahead and tell us a little bit about that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we had a resident, Brenda Derby approached the town looking to donate a bench. She was she's donating in remembrance of a resident in Northborough. We a little while ago, a little over a year ago, we had a bench that was deteriorated at Ellsworth Park. It's located along the walking trail, a little past where the we notes are. The bench was a wooden bench. It was deteriorated. It was placed in dedication and appreciation. I'm sorry, an appreciation to Paulamore for her assistance in establishment of the Ellsworth McAfee Park. That was done, I don't know how long ago. It was one of those wooden benches that have the the iron ends on them. The wood became deteriorated. The bench was removed. I have the plaque here. The location has been vacant of a bench for a little while. This donor came forward and was interested in donating a bench. This looked like a good opportunity to replace the the bench with a dedication bench. So Brenda Derby, she's donating one thousand four hundred and twenty five dollars and ninety nine cents for the purchase of a bench in remembrance of Bucky Rogers. He's a longtime resident. He passed away last November. He was a sergeant in the Marine Corps in the Korean War, and he also served on the Historic Society. So I'm asking the board to accept that donation.
I had a question. So there was a bench at that location that was dedicated to someone.
It was in appreciation of someone, Mr.
In appreciation to someone and you have the plaque. So this new bench is going in, well, it it your background fuzzed it off, but I believe you, I trust you. The this new bench is going in that location?
Yes, yep, yep, there's already a slab there.
Okay, so what about those who wanted to thank Ms. Moore and place the original bench there? I know that particular bench deteriorated. How do we deal with that?
Well, my 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 thought process and discussions were that, you know, the the appreciation bench is not necessarily a bench in perpetuity. If a gift, a gift or something is given to the express appreciation, I don't know if there's implication that it's to be there, you know, forever. That that was my my thoughts and opinions. The board feels otherwise. Of course, we can discuss it. But, you know, gifts are given, they're they're identified as appreciation. Are they required to be there forever or not?
Yeah, no, I I can appreciate that, but I I would think that dude, some due diligence would be due to see if somebody wanted to fund a replacement bench once that original bench deteriorated. Simple question, do you have another location for another bench if we can find someone to secure the funds to replace the bench that was for Ms. Moore?
Yes, yes, there are other benches of a similar era along that same section of the walking trail. This one deteriorated, I think, a little more quickly just because it was exposed to more sun. There are other benches of that same era, and there are other needs for benches down there. The more development we've had over the years at Ellsworth McAfee, there's or opportunities for you know, Ms. Ms. Moore's plaque to be reinstalled on another bench donation, if that was that's why we hang on to these plaques. We we have a stack of plaques off of different, you know, remembrances at the at the DPW garage.
Okay. Thank you. Members of the board, any any questions or staff, any questions? Julianne, I think I saw your hand just a fraction of a second before Scott's.
Sorry, Scott. A quick question. Could can that can the bench that's an appreciation of Paulamore be repaired?
No.
Okay.
No, it was it was, you know, those wooden wooden slap benches, people getting splinters on them. The wood was dry rotted on the ends. It was not repairable.
Okay.
Wooden benches aren't a very good choice nowadays, anyway, for me to splurge.
Scott, you had a question?
Yeah, along those lines, Scott. So then the replacement bench would be what material?
Oh, we have a somewhat of a standard style we use. It's it's a perforated steel epoxy coated bench. It's long lasting. It doesn't deteriorate in the weather. It doesn't result in a splintering issue. It doesn't flex. It's ADA compliant. You'll see the similar benches that we've installed at some of our other parks recently with the town common has those benches, the perforated metal.
Okay, perfect. That 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 orients me. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other members of the board or staff have questions? We have two hands raised. Amy Peretzky bringing you in.
Hi, Amy Peretzky, forty seven Indian Meadow Drive. For those of you out there that don't know Paulamore, Paulamore was the original person who funded the one thirty five park. She saved it from development of condos. And her idea with a bunch of other women in the nineteen eighties was to make the soccer fields and to have it a park for the whole town. So I feel that Paulamore needs to be recognized, maybe even more with than more than just the plaque. But definitely don't throw away the plaque and I don't have an extra fourteen hundred dollars, but I can try to start fundraising for it because I do know she worked very hard. There are some newspaper articles about her. And she deserves to be commended still at the park and not be forgotten. Without her, those would be some high rise condos right now. And and you can see today how one thirty five park is loved by everybody and how important it is for the town. She still lives in town and her son lives in town or in the area. So don't throw away the plaque and somehow we'll try to get some bench or something to commend Paulamore.
Great. Thank you, Amy.
Thanks.
And Laura? Bring you in now.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, Laura Zaitin, seventeen Franklin Circle. So I actually didn't know who Paulamore was. Last May, we did a posting for the Historical Society and somebody had commented about her bench. And I think it's really important that we do recognize her for all her efforts. It was not easy. easy when she did all the fundraising and all the advocacy. And those articles will point out how hard she worked. And so I definitely want that bench replaced. And however we need to go about that, I'm sure we can find people to help fundraise for it. But even beyond that, I think as a town, we really need to consider how we're treating the legacy of the people who have done things. And we should never just throw something away because it's deteriorated. There needs to be some steps in place so that we don't end up in situations like this. This was an accident. If that posting didn't go up by the Historical Society, you know, all of the other people wouldn't have commented on it. So we can do better as a town. And I'm glad that we're having this discussion today. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Scott?
Yeah, just to reiterate, you know, all the plaques that we've removed through different facilities as they've been retired have been maintained and kept at the highway garage. We have them. They're in storage. They're not disposed of. There are a variety of them that, you know, their facility they've been attached to have exceeded their lifespan. So if anybody out there, you know, sees a plaque that used to be there and isn't there, we still have it. It's just a matter of reaching out for to us about it.
Do you have a list of those plaques?
I have I have a stack.
Okay, yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, this, you know, this is a good opportunity that at some point, some people put some money towards putting this bench there. And maybe it was part of the original construction of the park based on on the description that we just got. It's a shame that I totally appreciate the bench deteriorated, needed to be taken out for safety reasons. I totally get that. It would have been great to at that point say, hey, we need fourteen hundred bucks to replace this bench. And then seeing if people could gather and donate the funds to do that then as opposed to this almost came up in an ancillary way. My preference is if we want a bench there for Paula, let's go ahead and keep that same location for Paula, try to raise the funds and find a great place to honor Bucky, which, you know, which is something we should also do. But I, you know, I I will leave, I think, those details to the DPW unless the board has any any stronger opinion. But I really like to use this as a jumping off point to to making this right also.
I'd be happy to replace another bench. It's I'm indifferent. You know, there's deteriorated benches and there's needs for new bench locations. You know, fifteen hundred dollars isn't a short expenditure for public works for benches. So I'm happy to happy to have it placed elsewhere if wanted.
Yeah, I mean, I think I think we could use more benches at just at that park. So I, you know, it's a busy place. Julianne?
I I was gonna say I would agree with that. Let's let's leave Paulamore's bench and and find a a nice location for Mr. Rogers' bench.
We have another another hand up. Lisa, bringing you in.
Thank you, Lisa Muselli, thirteen Maple Street. Is there any reason why we couldn't put Bucky's bench at the town common? Was one part of that land?
There isn't. I mean, we don't have a need for additional benches at the town common. That's a recently completed project with adequate seating. Ellsworth Park has expanded over the years, and there's certainly need for more benches. We actually eliminated some benches from the pickleball project due to cost limitations. So there's there's absolutely needs for more benches at that Ellsworth than than at the town common right now.
Well, but the way I was talking is that you were looking for looking for another location. So I didn't realize that you already had options.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. Yes, I my my inclination is let's try to reserve the the spot where Paula's bench was and see if we can raise the funds to put another bench there just for continuance purposes and and work with, whether it be, you know, Mr. Rogers' family or 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 Mr. Derby, who's donating the funds to go ahead and, you know, and find find a great location for a bunch, a bench to remember Bucky.
Certainly.
Okay, so that's unreasonable to everybody? Anybody have any have anything else to add or questions? In which case, the motion remains the same.
I don't think I've stated the motion yet.
Right, right, yes.
Okay. Did I do that now?
That would be great.
Okay. I move the board accept gift funds and authorize the DPW to expend such funds for a bench at Ellsworth McAfee Park pursuant to mass general law, chapter forty four, section fifty three A.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne seconded by Scott. Any other discussion? Scott, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote is unanimous in favor. Thank you very much. And I think we have some volunteers and from the audience who who are eager to help raise money to to get another bench at Ellsworth McAfee. So the discussion has been well worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. And as I work up to the top, we are now on to reports. Let's see, Julianne?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the first thing on my report tonight is about flowers. There have been several projects in town recently that deserve mentioning and a very big thank you. The first is to Lori Connors, our new town planner and the town common committee for the beautiful planters on Church Street and Main Street. I hope everyone has noticed them. They're beautiful arrangements. The second is to Gary Phillips, who with the help of a lot of people, including some of our young students, has planted a pollinator garden at Watson Park on Lyman Street. In addition to that, the meadow has now been adopted by a UMS professor for bee research. So the pollination project is going well. And also to the group of parents who refreshed the landscape at Peaslee School over the last couple of weeks, and the garden club who who had a had a big task this summer, this dry, hot summer, watering their gardens and and making sure that everything was maintained well. And I would also like to say, Scott, Miss DPW Chair, that I noticed the the fall garden in front of the town hall today. You kind of refreshed that one too. So that looks really nice. And and everyone else who's, you know, who's doing such a good job with the landscaping in town, it really makes a difference. My second comment is about CPC, Community Preservation Committee. They are now accepting applications. And just as a reminder, the categories are for open space, historic recreation, affordable housing. And just to remind people, MPIC meets this Thursday, September fifteenth, and will be discussing complete streets and and the downtown revitalization. And I have a little odd thing to end with, since Kristen is not here, and I know that we've all been enjoying her quotes, I'd like to offer one of my favorites. This is by Aaron Sorkin of West Wing Fame, you know, civic lesson on TV. And his quote is, decisions are made by those who show up. So we're going to meet having a lot of important decisions in the next few months. Please stay engaged, get engaged, tell your friends to to join up. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Julianne. Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the interest of time, no reports this evening.
Thank you very much. Scott?
Thank you, Mitch. A few quick things. I'll 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 try to make it as quick as possible. Just first, in memory of nine eleven, I just want to express that gratitude and appreciation to our first responders. I know there are several fire departments throughout the Commonwealth memorialized yesterday. So thanks for that. Thank you, as always, to the chiefs for their monthly reports, including the fire department for their donation of medical supplies to Ukraine, configuration of the outside brake area, receiving the crash stabilization package and the exhaust capture systems. And as always, letters of thanks from the people that are helped. For the police department, I don't know, Chief Labor, if, you know, word has gone out that we are looking to fill open slots in the department. So maybe just an opportunity and the type of candidates we're looking for for police officers. Oh, and you're on mute, sir.
Yes, thank you. We do have an opening and we've advertised it. It's on our website. It's on the we've had several good candidates, but none of them qualified. Out of the twelve or thirteen that we've received in the last week or so, there were only two that require had the requisite achievements to be considered. So we have a couple others that we're bringing in. We'll sort that out soon and we'll reconvene the interview committee.
Okay, so yeah, so folks that are interested know somebody who might be, try to spread that word as much as possible.
Excellent. Thank you.
And upcoming this week, a couple important meetings. We continue thirty four. So that'll be going in front of groundwater as well. I'll be participating in that. There is a public information session on Wednesday regarding reconfiguring the intersections on Route twenty in Truysbury. So that that includes our nine twenty interchanges around as as well as South Street. I'll be attending that session. From the Board of Health, code testing kits, new order of those are going to be available. The the Health Department is scheduling COVID booster and flu vaccine clinics. Watch for that. And there's a new community resources guide that will be published with all sorts of important services information for the town of Northborough. Other parks and rec, very successful summer program, fall programs are open for signup. On tricky trot planning, this seems funny to talk about that, but planning is underway already for that to be that available on Thanksgiving. The trail design for the senior center, that is underway. There will be a public input session for the plans for the dog park on October eleventh. Mark your dates for that. And they're also exploring a possible project to resurface or extend the tennis and basketball courts at Mellican Middle School. Julianne mentioned CPC projects are open. None had come before Parks and Rec Commission at the time of their last meeting. A reminder on current committee openings. Let me do this list real quick. Accessors, access assessors, sorry, cemetery commission, community affairs, council on aging, cultural council, design review committee, financial planning committee, historic district commission, municipal code and bylaw committee, open space committee, trails committee, youth commission, and zoning board of appeals. So a lot of positions open for folks. And I was asked by then the zoning board of appeals, who has an opening for the alternate seat on what the board's intent is for filling that seat. So we promoted the alternate to a permanent to a regular member position. Do we intend to advertise for new new candidates to apply for that alternate seat? So that's actually a question as part of my report, but that would end my report.
Thank you, Scott. John, are we advertising for that alternate position?
I'm not sure that we have advertised yet. I wasn't, I mean, looking for some direction from the board or what you want to do.
Yeah, I mean, it's a it's a vacancy. We should try to fill it. As well. Thanks. Couple of things. I don't think we've talked about the online permit center that was added to the town website a few months ago. It is a pretty good system. It's primarily for people that are actually filing for permits. But anyone can go in, as I learned, anyone can go in, create an account, and then you can search for properties and see at least a little bit of information as to the permits that are open, whether it be in your neighborhood or anywhere in town. Hopefully eventually it will it will add more detail and get all the permit related documentation, everything else. But this is this is a great step. I want to congratulate the Community Affairs Committee for a successful summer concert series. I attended almost all of the concerts, and there were no rainouts. This is the first year that I remember that possibly ever. The statewide election that was held last week, I think, went very, very well. Congratulations to our town clerk and staff and everybody else for making that go smoothly. My only question or possible complaint is why were the restaurants not open to the public? There are a lot of folks that need to use the facilities when they go into a school and and several people were turned away. So I hope that that's something that can be sorted out in advance of the November election, when we'll certainly have at least double the number of people going going through the building. I do want to make mention, and this is my fault, we received a very nice email asking that we recognize the month of September as childhood cancer awareness month in Northborough. I am responsible and I should have put that on the agenda, and I failed to. So as Chair, I will I will proclaim proclaim that. And hopefully next year, we will remember to to issue that by vote. That's a very, very important cause. And and we should do everything we can to just alert and remind people of the severity of of such things. I had the question as to who did the the bridge flower plots, but thank you, Julianne, for educating us on that. Those are beautiful. And we did receive at least one email from a resident in the vicinity of SA Farms, saying that they were noticing some odors in the area. Luckily, that's the first time we received that kind of report from residents in a very long time. But I just want to, you know, let the public know where we care very, very deeply about that situation. If anybody notices anything that the town or in particularly the state should investigate, please let us know. That ends my report. John, did you have anything this evening?
Not in the interest of time, nothing tonight.
Okay, thank you. We have a couple of things related to the fire station. John, why don't you walk us through this?
Sure. So on your agenda tonight is acceptance of the deed for the fire station property. This is the sixty one sixty five West Main Street property. As you know, we've had this under agreement for quite some time. Unfortunately, well, fortunately, we structured the purchase and sale to require the seller to remove all structures and to remediate the site. Despite the fact that the seller had what he considered to be clean LSP reports, that there's no more contamination, we had some concerns. Long and short of it was when they did remove the garage down by the roadway, there was an old tank that nobody was aware of, and there was contamination unrelated to that tank, we believe, but contamination of diesel fuel. So that remediation has been going on for the better part of a year. Following the remediation, we were waiting for the seller to get two quarters of groundwater testing completed. So the last quarter was completed at the end of July, beginning of August of this year. So finally, we believe we have a a site that has been appropriately remediated. We have hired our own licensed site professional who has watched this process on behalf of the town and has reviewed all of the documents and submissions to DEP for the for the remediation. He has signed off on and and given his his okay that he believes the site is as cleaned up as it's going to be. The one thing that we are aware of is that in the event of us doing some footings, if we encounter groundwater that although may be below the reportable level, we may need to clean, we may need to do some work to remove that off site. That is the limit of what we might encounter. And that's why in the purchase and sale, you saw the price of the purchase sale dropped off to reflect that potential expense that we may see, although it's 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 unlikely we may see anything. So anyway, the long and short of it is, on September twentieth, we were going to finally close on the sixty one sixty five West Main Street property. As part of that standard process, the board has to accept the deed. So tonight, town council is asking you to accept the deed, which was prepared by by Copman and Page, our legal counsel. That will be held and used as part of the final closing on the twentieth. So approval and acceptance of the deed is a step that needs to take place tonight in preparation for the final closing on the twentieth. So that's the first item that's on. While I have everybody, in terms of the overall project, we are also have a purchase and sale that is just about finished for ten Monroe Street. And this is the small parcel directly in back. Obviously, there was no need for us to proceed with that parcel if the sixty one sixty five West Main Street main parcel was not going to be viable due to contamination, or we couldn't come to an agreement regarding the remediation with the seller. So now that that is locked up, proceeding with the purchase and sale for ten Monroe. And I anticipate that coming back to you probably by the end of October. probably by the end of October. So that's progressing nicely, in fact, the individual who is selling has an offer that was accepted on another place, so she's actually quite anxious to to wrap the deal up, so it's all around the the timing has worked out very well for us. As you know, the Ten Monroe site coupled with the sixty one sixty five West Main, this is the old Pierce Gas Station across from Dunkin Donuts, for those of you that don't know what I'm referring to. That will give us enough area to have proper circulation, not need a very expensive retaining wall. And also, Ten Monroe will will help give us access to some of that upper, upper land for other potential municipal uses. So for right now, that's just a general update on where the project is, but for right now, before you this evening is acceptance of the deed as prepared by by council.
Thank you very much, John, any questions? Julian.
So we, we had the LSP approve of the remediation that happened with the soil and site, correct?
Yes.
Does that have to go to D E P now, or?
Yes, yeah, as you know, I've communicated this to the board, the report gets submitted to D E P and then D E P has a period of time to look at it, and so so we, one of the reasons why we scheduled the closing out to September twentieth was to give D E P some time to look at it, I did circle back with our LSP, our licensed site professional, and he's indicated that that there's no issues, I don't know that D E P has formally accepted it. That's one of the things we continue to check on, but he's not anticipating that there's any issue with that. If there is an issue, then we potentially postpone the September twentieth closure. That's independent of your action tonight, tonight you're just accepting the deed.
Okay.
If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion on the deed item.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve and sign the acceptance for the sixty one and sixty five West Main Street properties as prepared by Town Council. The acceptance is to be held in escrow by Town Council until such time as the closing occurs.
Second. Motion's been made by Scott, seconded by Jason, any other discussion? All those in favor, let's see, Scott?
Hi.
Julianne?
Hi.
And Jason?
Hi.
I also vote aye, it is really good to get that step behind us, good luck at the closing and everything else.
It's been a long, it's been a very long haul on this, but I had to say, I had to say, you know, the town, the town doing its due diligence saved us from potentially inheriting a significant, a very significant cleanup. The big piece of it was, we just needed to be assured that the contamination wasn't residing in the groundwater at reportable levels, and if it was, that's a whole nother level of cleanup. So luckily, everything has worked out fine and the cost has been on the seller, not on the taxpayer, so everything worked out well, just not as quickly as we all would have liked it, but you know, that's how it happens when you buy an old gas station, so.
Very good. All right, next on our agenda, also on the fire station is consideration for approving John's appointments to the Fire Station Building Committee, John, do you want to walk us through that?
Yeah, so as I said, very exciting, at this point, we are able to move forward with our with our building project, so as you know, we did complete a feasibility study that was wrapped up all the way up to the point of approving a town meeting, the purchase of the property that we were just discussing. You know, Mitch was on as a citizen at the time, Mitch, you're on the feasibility study. So that process, the feasibility component or phase is over. Now it's appropriate for us to create a building committee to move forward by charter, I'm the appointing authority, subject to approval of the board. In your packet, I'm recommending, I tried to expand it by adding a couple more citizen positions, but it's a semid member committee, which is significantly, you know, five is usually a better number, but but I expanded it to seven, so we have a designee from the Board of Selectmen, that'll be at the discretion of the Chair. A designee from Financial Planning Committee, my understanding from the Chairman of the Financial Planning Committee that John Rappel will be the representative from there. Fire Chief David Parenti, Fire Captain Dan Brillhart, Dan Brillhart is the person who is responsible for the physical facility, that's his area for the fire station, so it was important to have firefighters have a voice during this process, and Dan was the most logical person to do that since he is responsible for the actual facility. And then there's three citizen positions. I am bringing forward two tonight, I would hope to finish up the third, but I'm still doing interviews and talking to folks. But the two that would be brought forward tonight would be Dawn Rand, who served as the Chair of the Fire Station Feasibility Study. And so she's interested in continuing on, and I think she'd be a great addition. And then Diana Nicholas, who is a former Design Review Committee member, Master Plan Steering Committee member, and currently serves on White Cliffs. So Diane is an architect by trade, and one of the things I was seeking is folks with some professional background, so architects, engineers, project managers, those types. And so that's where it stands at this point, so there's still one more position to be appointed, but that's what I'm bringing forward for your approval this evening.
Okay, so specifically, you're, you're asking for us to endorse the Fire Chief, the Fire Captain, and the two citizens. Member of the board and the Financial Planning Committee, I think those appointments are direct and then you'll, you'll come back to us hopefully with an additional citizen at an upcoming meeting, is that accurate?
Exactly, but I want to get the committee moving, appointed, so we've lost a lot of time. To no fault of our own, just because of this remediation and trying to get the paperwork cleaned up and the D E P's filings taken care of. So so we're ready to to move forward, and I want to get the committee up and running.
Great, and I will say that I was preparing, I had, I had someone in mind for for an appointment and then a second person from the board reached out to me, so I'm going to be having some discussions and hopefully within, maybe by the end of the week. I'll let you know who that that person will be to sit on on behalf of the board, and we do have a hand up. So Amy Paretsky. Come on in.
Hi, thanks, Amy Paretsky, forty seven Indian Meadow Drive, I'm also on the Planning Board, Design Review, and Master Plan Implementation Committee. As you know, I did send an email to the board, or two of them. And per our zoning bylaws that are voted on every year at town meeting, the design review is stated as shall be required to be part of the approval for a special permit with site plan or site plan for any building, a new construction or alterations in any business district, including municipal buildings. I just wanted to know when and where in the process the design review will be brought into this?
Good questions. Yeah, that'll be, well, it'll be after we have something to share, I guess.
Oh, okay.
Typically, what we'll do is you get to a conceptual design and then it's a chance to seek some public comment on that. So so we'll get through that, get through that process. And you know, as the, as the design starts to take shape, you know, and people can provide comments and input along the way as well.
Okay, and also the Planning Board has site plan review?
Yeah, whatever the normal process is, it will be followed.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, and I did have a concern about one of the appointees. I don't want to go into detail, but I was wondering if you asked that person if they're going to have the time to put forth to this committee? Because when I was on another committee, although she's probably done good things with her career, she didn't have the time and only attended four out of fifteen of the master plan meetings, so I was just wondering if she gave you an inclination that she would have the time to commit to this? Also, she resigned from the Design Reviews Committee standing, she didn't have the time. So as part of the interview process, did you ask if she's had time free up to join another committee?
Yes.
And you don't think she'll, okay, so she's not going to be? Because it's great to have someone with experience, but if they don't show up, then doesn't help. Okay, those are the points that I wanted to make.
Great, thank you very much, Amy.
Thanks.
Sure, Julianne, you had your, your hand up, and then I know there are a couple of other hands up in the audience.
Oh, no, go with the audience first.
Okay. Carrie Martinek, bringing you in.
Hello, Carrie Martinek, sixteen Hemlock Drive, I'm also on the Planning Board, and I was curious to know if there was consideration for a Planning Board designee on such a committee?
No, not traditionally, the Planning Board will, will review the project as it goes through the normal process, as will design review as we just discussed, so.
Okay, I just wanted to submit for consideration to the board that perhaps it would be easier as you go through the process to at least have somebody there, either whether on Design Review or Planning Board, that could kind of help maybe navigate or flatten out any kinks or just help to whatever extent is possible for consideration, thanks so much.
Thank you, Carrie. And my hope is that the, the, the process for going through the design phase is, is very, very open, whether it be Zoom meetings or televised meetings, something like that, so whether it be members of boards and committees, the public can, can follow along in, in great detail. And now I will bring in one more hand, Lisa Micali. Hi, Lisa.
Hi, Rich, thanks, Lisa Micali, thirteen Maple, I've got a couple of questions. First, why are there two, why are there two fire representatives, firing representatives? Why would there not just be the, the fellow who does the municipal work, I'm sorry that I can't remember his name, but he would certainly be a representative of all the people that are, that he works with, wouldn't he?
Yeah, the firefighters themselves asked for representation, and that's what we did in the feasibility study, and I think it worked quite well.
Well, yeah, I would keep him on, but then why would you need the Fire Chief?
He brings a different perspective. Just like I've always worked, you know, you have got the library director or the senior center director, when we did those projects, we're at the meetings and so. Again, this is, this, this is the similar makeup to the feasibility study, which I think went quite well, except we just added more citizen positions.
So you're going to then have staff that's going to have a voting representation on this, on what the building, what the building looks like?
Yes.
Is that unusual to have?
No, this is a, this is not a public building, it's a public building in the sense that it is owned by the public, but is it facility to be used for a very specific purpose by the occupants, which are the firefighters? It's a little bit different than, say, a senior center or a library for that matter. So, yeah, it is a little bit different.
All right, and they will, all the meetings will be held under Zoom or under public meetings, so people can talk and they can give opinions?
They'll be held in compliance with the open meeting law, I don't know exactly what form that will take.
Okay, and are we going to be given more than one choice of what the building's going to look like?
It's a process of refining, just like we did again with the library, the senior center, the Lincoln Street Building Project, it's a process of refinement.
Yeah, I'll, I'll
To get to a preferred, to get to a preferred option.
Yeah, I'll answer that question a little further, by the time it gets to town meeting, it has to be exactly one option, there's, there's really no feasible way of, of presenting multiple options to a town meeting. But there presumably will be multiple options that will get whittled down to one.
That's what I'm asking for, is that we have them, because at the last few meetings of the first five, the feasibility, there wasn't an awful lot of public input, it was just, this is it, and I think that I think the town has the right to, to, you know, put their handle on it as well, since they're paying for it. And I'd also like to see this under a special town meeting and not at the town meeting that we have everything else on.
And Amy, your hand is up again, I don't know if that's again or still, I'll bring you in again.
It's me again, thanks, Amy Paretsky, forty seven Indian Meadow Drive. In the time of COVID, I know, you know, the public meetings aren't really open to the public, they are, but nobody can call in because it's through YouTube. Do you think these fire station committee meetings will be live? Or do you think they're going to be held through Zoom? Because there really wouldn't be any room for input.
I, I, I don't think anybody
The committees will be, the meetings will be held live in accordance with the open meeting law, whether or not public input is taken at every meeting, I, I don't know that, we haven't, we haven't brought the committee together, but the committee needs time to do its work, there are appropriate times and junctures where public input is, is very much necessary and and would be taken, again, I would use as examples, the library building project, the senior center building project, the Lincoln Street Building Project, all of which were wildly successful, on time, under budget, by similar process.
They just weren't on Zoom, I'm just hoping that it doesn't get too far down the line before any inputs taken, because it's so expensive to go back, and it sounds like you have a tight schedule if you're going to try to get it on this year's town meeting.
We'll let the architect, when we bring the architect on board, come up with a critical timeline, so things have been delayed due to the remediation, as I said, so it remains to be seen what the timeline will look like, that's what's reasonable.
Okay, so it might not be this year. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Amy.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions, comments from the board? Julianne?
Yeah, so I have observed through some of my committees that that there are members of staff who kind of come and go at these meetings and, and, and have, you know, significant input. But and I think that with this, it's that it's it down the line, it will be important for us to discuss, you know, whether staff, staff votes and, and of the staff who come, who does vote. So could you just tell us beside yourself and, and the chiefs and, and the, the other firemen, who, who are the other staff members that you envision attending these meetings and what will their role be? Will they have voting privileges?
No, no, the committee as presented is the voting committee. I will be there, depending on the needs, we may have DBW come in and out. Probably will have our facilities manager involved in the, in the meetings. So staff, we may have the town planner in there if necessary, so the staff will come and go in support of the, of the committee's work, but again, just stressing to you again, this is not a, a library or a, a senior center. The first and foremost, this building needs to serve the firefighters in that core emergency function. And that, that needs very significant input from the end users who are going to be literally living in that facility, so that's why it's structured the way it is.
Oh, I, I understand that completely, so, so it will be the committee as you've outlined it, and those will be the only people voting?
Yes.
It is proposed as a seven-member board, so those seven are the
Laid out as a seven-member board, yep.
Okay.
Yep, and I'll, I'll, I'll add that I, I'm not entirely sold on the idea of having staff members voting on this type of committee, I'm not proposing we do anything different because I know this is the town's practice. So this is, that will be how, how things will be with this committee, I think it may make sense to have some discussion as to, you know, any future building projects, staff have to play an incredibly critical role. But, you know, due, due to hierarchy and who people, you know, do you, do you want a voting, two people who are, who are voting that are, are, you know, a manager and sub the manager? Sometimes looks a little awkward, again, I'm not suggesting we do anything different here, that's a discussion for a different day. Lisa Micali has her hand up one more time, or bring you in again for a second, Lisa?
Thank you, so there are two, two last questions, one, when will we see what the, what the, what the price tag is going to be, because it's got to be so much greater than what it was proposed for the first time around with the pandemic and the cost of materials going up seventy percent and labor and all that sort of thing, it's got to be a huge amount more than we were expecting. And, and is there any way that you can extend this to next meeting to decide on whether or not the, you're going to go, how you're going to set up this, this building committee, because there's still some questions, I mean, you don't have the fifth fifth select person here to talk about it, and I think that, that it would be better to have everybody in place and, and talk a little bit more about that voting right for the staff, because right for the staff, because I don't think that that's legal, and I don't think we should make it a practice. I don't know how often North Rose made it a practice, but I don't think it's a good good practice.
Yeah, I'll try to answer those. Regarding the cost, nobody, nobody will know the cost until we've gone through a design process. Part of that process is the architects will give the town some rough cost estimates as they design. That's part of their job. And then as the design starts to wrap up, the project is typically headed headed off to a cost estimator who actually knows the building climate and everything else. Yeah, so it's it's too early to predict. I am, as you are, Lisa, concerned about cost escalation that has taken place over the last few years, but we are where we are. We can't go back in time. So we'll see where it takes us is the only thing we can do. And then we present our, you know, best our best option to town meeting and and town meeting makes that decision. And I, you know, I will commit that I will, I will have a representative, at least from the Board of Selectmen to this committee before whatever the first meeting is that takes place. And then we'll only have one more opening to deal with in the future. John, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add to that.
No.
Okay.
One more cost estimate estimator is used at at key points during the design continuum. And we'll get that information so we can adjust the design to value engineering as needed.
Okay, because that's that's what I'd like to be able to have the option for adjusting it, making it smaller if necessary, because it's not a blank check. And and I think there's got to be some consideration given to the cost. So that, yes, it'd be lovely to have a very big building and everything else, but I think we're going to have to start looking at the reality that we can't spend money on everything else in town, and we've got schools easily that never got, that we got worked on and.
Right now, right now, Lisa, we're focused on appointment of of committee members.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Lisa. I appreciate the input. Okay. Again, back to this this item, which is confirmation of the four members that John is appointing to the committee. Julian, did you have a question?
Yeah, it's kind of a technical thing. Is maybe we should postpone the vote until we know all three residents and got, you know, more information about other applicants? Does it make sense to to approve this tonight? You can't meet until you have your complete.
You could, you can meet when you have a quorum, which is would be four members. And there would, there would be, you know, four, four known tonight, and then you know, one, one from this board and one from financial planning, and then we'd only have to meet again to decide the last member.
Okay.
Okay. Jason, did you have a question?
I would just like to proceed, Mr. Chair.
Fine with me. Someone like to to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to approve the town administrators' appointments to the Fire Station Building Committee as as presented.
Second.
Motion been made by Julianne, seconded by Scott. All those in favor, Jason?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote unanimously in favor. Thank you very much. We have some some additional appointments on behalf of the board. Julianne from the Appointment Subcommittee, do you want to present these to us or or John?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to appoint Brittany Burns and Patricia Fontes to the Board of Library Trustees, each for a partial three-year term, as recommended by the interview committee. Do you want me to do all of them and we'll vote or or committee by committee?
Since these are broken down individually, let's just stick with them individually, so we don't mess it up.
So that's.
Okay, Scott, was that a second?
Second on that first one, yeah.
Okay, motion made by Julianne, seconded by Scott. All in favor, Jason?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Thank you very much. Vote unanimously in favor. Next up, Julianne?
I move the board vote to appoint Cynthia Moore to the Scholarship Committee for a partial one-year term, as recommended by the interview committee.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Scott. All those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote unanimously in favor. Congratulations, Cynthia. And lastly, Julianne?
I move the board vote to appoint James Harrington to the Board of Registars for a partial three-year term, as recommended by the interview committee.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Scott. Once again, all those in favor, let's see, Julianne?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote unanimously in favor. Congratulations, Mr. Harrington. And next on our agenda, we've got a cemetery deed, actually two cemetery deeds.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, having trouble with my mute button.
Okay.
I move the board vote to execute cemetery deeds one one five four and one one five five.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and made by Jason, seconded by, I think I heard Julianne first. Let's see, all those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote unanimously in favor. Let's see, any other business to come before the board?
Need for a brief executive session.
Okay, and one last opportunity for public comment. Should anyone feel the need this evening? Going once? Going twice? I'll entertain a mission, motion to enter executive session.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Lodge, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty one, subsection three, collective bargaining strategy planning. Due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding these manners matters in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board.
Second.
Motion made by Scott, seconded by Julianne. All those in favor, Jason?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
I also vote aye. We are entering executive session at ten thirty seven PM. Thank you very much for the lengthy but productive public session.